Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, May 19th, 2006. It is 10:00 AM, and we are here in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM here, except the first Friday of the month, we meet at 10:00 AM at our Van Nuys City Hall. We invite folks to come here to testify on items that are noticed for public hearings or on a general public comment. We also can take your testimony from Van Nuys via remote at Van Nuys City Hall if that is closer to where you live. We are being broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, and we also rebroadcast in the evening. We are available also through our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where we have a streaming live webcast of our council proceedings. And you can also call in through council phone at 213-621-CITY in order to listen to the proceedings of city council or any of our committees as well. We are awaiting a quorum, 10 members, or two-thirds of our 15. I want to thank council members Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, and Zine for being here in a timely manner. We have a number of council members who are excused for today, but we are still awaiting council member, let's see, Gruel, council member Weiss, and Wesson, and Mr. Smith will be coming in a little bit later as well. On Friday, it is customary for us to honor members of the community and the Los Angeles area for a number of reasons, and we will begin our presentations while we're waiting our quorum, starting with the council member from the 9th District. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And today, I have chosen to recognize a group of individuals who, through their commitment to their jobs, the people of Los Angeles are working very hard to create an open and friendly environment for people who visit, work, and live in our city center. I'm happy to be joined today by the Purple Patrol. With us today are Carol Schatz, President and CEO of the Downtown Center BID, Raquel King from the Historic Downtown BID, Abraham Torres from the South Park BID, Natasha Stevens from the Downtown Center BID, Frank Lagatuta from Chrysalis Enterprises, Charmaine Hayes from Chrysalis, Ken Nakano from Universal Protection Services, Lieutenant Jose Cordova, Assistant Safety Project Manager from Universal, Daniel Ruiz, Sergeant Downtown Center BID, Linell Cole, Safety Senior Sergeant, Jamil Dweerson, Outreach Team Member, Marion Barker, Outreach Team Member, Kimberly Moore, Ambassador, Winter Walton, Ambassador, Emmanuel Woods, Maintenance Supervisor, John Roberts, Maintenance Mechanic, Steve Dimakale, Maintenance Sweeper, and Oscar Lee Jr., Case Manager, SRO Housing Corporation, formerly with the Downtown Center BID. I'm very proud to stand with the Purple Patrol today. The Downtown Center's Business Improvement District's Purple Patrol has made significant contributions to the well-being of our city since its inception in 1998. The Purple Patrol is a highly visible team of purple-shirted workers who provide 24-hour, daily supplemental services to maintain the cleanliness and safety within the 65-block district and received over 90,000 calls for service in 2005. They have played an essential role in notifying all property owners when an elevated terrorist threat was announced in the Financial District in 2005 and was the only BID to be invited to participate in the city's emergency preparedness team after 9/11. In the past, the members of the Purple Patrol have saved a life by administering CPR before the paramedics arrived. They help provide crowd control and other safety measures at hundreds of demonstrations and marches since 1968. The Purple Patrol, I'm sorry, 1998, that's a typo, 1998, it's a long time.
I'm old enough.
Okay, I know, I know. All right. The Purple Patrol Maintenance Team, of whom 450 have been recruited from Chrysalis, and I want you to note this, 450 of the employees on the maintenance team, people who were formerly homeless, have been recruited from Chrysalis, a nonprofit program offering employment opportunities to economically disadvantaged and formerly homeless people and with over $3 million in wages paid since 1998 to keep the sidewalks clean, empty over 340 trash receptacles, and provide tree trimming. The Purple Patrol's Outreach Team offers assistance and resources, okay, to the homeless, including over 4,000 contacts over the past five years, of whom over 2,000 have accepted services. The Purple Patrol's ambassadors answer questions, provide directions, staff informational kiosks, and made contact with over 25,000 visitors in 2005. So if anybody wants to know how you help people who were formerly homeless get back into the job mainstream, this is a great way to do it. I also wanted to take this opportunity to highlight a few of the Purple Patrol members who've joined us here today. Jamil Dweerson, Outreach Team Member. Mr. Dweerson has won the trust of the homeless community through his empathetic and giving heart. He has assisted numerous individuals who are now clean, sober, have jobs, and housing. He helps his clients by assisting them in setting realistic goals and holds them accountable in meeting those goals. Mr. Dweerson, if you'd raise your hand, please. Thank you very much. Marion Barker, member of the Outreach Team. Mr. Barker, a Chrysalis employee, former maintenance worker for Central City East. Mr. Barker is a very patient and determined individual. He has an understanding of the daily struggles that homeless and addicted individuals face. He has gained the trust of individuals through his personal experiences, his humility, his sense of humor, and his genuineness. Mr. Barker, if you'd just step up here. Thank you. I also want to recognize two members of the Safety Team, Corporal Jason DeLeo and Sergeant Daniel Ruiz. Both have made numerous referral arrests which led to several narcotics dealers being taken off the streets. And last, but not least, I wanted to recognize two members of the team who are contracted through Chrysalis Enterprise. John Roberts, Mechanic, and Oscar Lee Jr., Case Manager, who is now with SRO Housing Corporation. Mr. Roberts keeps the sidewalk scrubber machines as well as all of our equipment in good working condition and performs repairs when needed. Mr. Lee, while working with the Downtown Center BID Purple Team, through Chrysalis Enterprises' Street Works Program, has obtained his Alcohol Counseling Certificate at Los Angeles Community College at night while working full-time. I wanted to personally thank all of the individuals present here today and the entire team for their work on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and to thank them for their dedication to their jobs and to all of us. You are truly making a positive impact here in our city, and thank you very much.
Before you speak, Carol, we have three council members, Mr. Parks, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Rosendahl, who would like to be heard as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to lend my voice of support. I have to say, I was a doubter when it first started, and then when we saw how they performed during the Democratic National Convention and how they performed throughout and how professional they were, and to hear the community reflect on the benefits, we now, getting ready to start a bid in Limerick Park, use them as an example, as people talk about, in addition to the issue of cleanliness and a variety of other things in the bid, they want to know about more security. And we said, "Take a moment, go downtown, and get a chance to see what a model program looks like." And so, Mr. Barker, thank you. You've made me a believer. I appreciate it, and the fact that we saw them in operation around the square during the DNC where it was very hectic, and they jumped right in and helped as they were trained. And we also were very appreciative after September 11th, that, like I said, they were one of the few that we brought forward and said, "You're part of this whole city effort and family effort in dealing with our safety." And so, thank you, Carol. Keep up the good work, and you have a model program.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Carol asked me to say some good comments, but, no, you did, but you know what? I'm not saying these comments because you asked me to say good comments. I'm saying it because I know what they do. I know and I see what they do. And I travel through the city at night, and I see what it turns into at night and how it transforms into the day, and what the good work that's been done, not only the security, but the cleanliness. And if it wasn't for the team that is doing that, downtown would not be doing what it's doing today. It would not be building residence, it would not be an inviting location. And when I travel around the country, different cities, I'll see that they have the bids in operation, they have the people who are the tourist guides, cleanliness of the communities, especially in the metropolitan downtown areas, and that's exactly what we're doing here. So I commend you and the team and recognize them for what they're doing. I see they've got some sergeant's bars and some captain's bars and lieutenant bars. Those are the promotions within the process, but I see the big guy there who would make a good LAPD officer is the front tackle. We are recruiting police officers in the LAPD, so any of you who are interested, no, 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 no. If you're interested, we're looking for good people to come and join, because you're working closely with the LAPD, and the officers that are out of Central Division speak highly of the work that you all are doing. So congratulations, it's well-recognized. And Carol, that's from the heart, that's not because you asked me to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nobody asked me to speak, but I'm up here because I believe in what you're doing. First, I want to thank my colleague Jan Perry for her leadership. We've drawn a line in the city, and we said, "We have to find solutions for homelessness, not continue to step over people in cardboard boxes and in tents and say, 'Oh, my God, isn't this awful.'" Well, we went to New York, and Carol Schatz, right there, was with us, and we looked at what New York did at 42nd Street. And what they did create with the bid, which is the Business Improvement District, is a strategy that has worked. And I know, Carol, you're committed to that. And the combination of the business community, the developer community, the social action community, and those involved in homeless services, getting together with the city, the county, and the state, which we are doing, we are working together as a team, we'll find solutions to homelessness. So what you're doing on the street is commendable and is a step in the direction of creating the atmosphere that we need to have to solve the homeless problem. Congratulations to all of you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I too want to simply thank and congratulate the Purple Team and thank Carol for her leadership and her support of this team. And to quickly state that we should realize that our bids, particularly the Purple Team in downtown, is not to supplant the services the city has an obligation to already provide, but is supplemental to that. And oftentimes, I know it's an issue where the city is now saying, "Well, they're doing their work, let us put our resources somewhere else." This is a supplement to the services the city already has an obligation to provide, and you guys are doing a great team, and we should continue to work together to make downtown the great place it can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labange and Ms. Gruel?
Thank you very much, Jan Perry, for your constant leadership. Carol Schatz, thank you for your constant leadership, and to the Purple Team, thank you, the Purple Patrol, thank you. I know they had another Purple Team down at 12th and Figueroa, kind of went out early, but you're our champions. You're our champions of downtown, and I salute you, and when I get a chance, when I see you out and about, I'd like to personally thank you, because you absolutely have made a difference. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Gruel?
I will be brief as well, but, Jan, I know that you did wear the purple to match today, I think that, you know. But how long, how long has this program been going on now?
Since 1998.
Since 1998. And it's been such a successful program, and I know that I see them all over downtown area, and I think they have served as ambassadors as well in our downtown area. And so, just wanted to stand up as well and congratulate all of you. You make us all proud, and that it's a fabulous program. And, Ms. Perry, I know you know this, but you're lucky to have them in downtown and their willingness to invest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Please.
I will just be very brief in thanking you for thanking these individuals behind me who do such an incredible job for the entire community. We are so thrilled that with property owner assessment dollars, we have been able to help 500 people get jobs, connect 1,300 people to services, to housing and services, to assist I don't know how many thousands of visitors, to administer CPR, to help your emergency I am so proud of this team. They do incredible work in sometimes very dangerous and unsafe conditions, and they do it, and they are proud of what they do, they are trained, they know their job, and without them, downtown would look, feel, and be very different. So to all of you, from all of the property owners, from the city as a whole, thank you so much, and congratulations for phenomenal work well done.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Next, recognized for next presentation, Mr. Zine from the 3rd Council District. Madam Clerk, while we're doing this, can we please call the roll?
Cardiness Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Do I get six for each presentation, Mr. President? Mr. President, do I get six for each presentation? Or six total?
That's correct, six minutes total.
But I got two presentations, sir.
Oh, for the other one, you'll get another six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me do the first one. Jacques Hay. No, Jacques, and then we'll do the personnel. Jacques, come on up here, please. Jacques Hay, for the past 12 years, he's been reaching into his own pocket to provide a free summer camp in the West Valley for Jewish kids who are physically and mentally challenged, listened to the help of his own sons and friends to volunteer as counselors, been dedicated to helping the students at Miller High School, which is in my district, and serves special education students. The principal of the school has nothing but wonderful things to say about Jacques and his activities. Converted his business on Reseda Boulevard, award winners, into a miniature golf course, complete with palm trees to raise much-needed funds for Miller High School, where Jacques has promised to help the students get ready to enter the workforce upon graduation. He held a golf tournament in his business in this makeshift golf course, and the tournament, which was held on March 26th, raised approximately $10,000. And I visited and golfed and got two holes in one, which is unprecedented for me. His wife Judy says that she's married to a man with a heart of gold who has instilled goodness and giving in their children and in so many other families who helped him do such wonderful things. Has the complete support of his wife and family in all of his activities. Truly a special person who is loved as much as he presents love. And the city council is recognizing you, Jacques Hay, today for your activities. And when I attended on March 26th, the golf tournament, I was so impressed with what you did, I said, "We need to bring you down here to city council to let the people of Los Angeles know that you opened your heart, you opened your business, you opened your wallet, to help those that are challenged, that have all those obstacles in life, and that your willingness and your love for people has brought this about." And I wanted to bring you down and acknowledge you before the council and the people of Los Angeles, and present you with this resolution for the good work that you do to help those that are in need. Congratulations. Jacques Hay.
Thank you very much. The first time I saw Councilman Zine, he was running many years ago for the same position that he holds now, and I stood next to a gentleman, I said, "Who's this person begging your permission?" He said, "Oh, it's some nut named Dennis Zine."
We say the same thing here.
The more I think about it, it's absolutely true. This gentleman is an acorn, he's a wonderful acorn, who's planted hope and enthusiasm throughout all of his constituents throughout the valley. And I tell you, I just follow in his shadows. I thank you, and I have a quick story, if you don't mind, that I heard once with Councilman Zine, a story about a poor farmer, and his wife had just three animals on their farm, a chicken, a lamb, and a cow. And every night, these animals would meet unbeknownst to the owners of the property. And there was a fourth member, a rat, and a rat came up to them and says, "Look, there's rat traps all over the place." The cow said, "It doesn't concern me." Chicken says, "The chickens never died of a rat trap." And the lamb just walked away. Sure enough, the next day, in the middle of the night, the wife gets up and sees the rat in a rat trap, dead. She dies of a heart attack. The husband comes, and he's just sobesides himself. The neighbors come, they say, "You know, rest, take it easy, we'll take care of everything." He awakes, and he's got this strange smell through his, says, "What's that smell?" And the lady says, "Well, we're having all these people come here, I had to cook the chicken." And he says, "Well, what's that other smell?" "Well, you know, your aunts and uncles are coming, and we had to slaughter the cow, and since the mayor and the town's coming, we had to kill the lamb also." So, in essence, the moral of the story is that what each and every one of us does reflects and infects everything else, and we're all in this world together. And Councilman Labage referred to me as Rabbi, I'm the furthest thing from a rabbi, but it's very important to note that this week, in our tour session, it stated, "The Lord said Moses come fourth, and he came in third and paid $280." Just to add one last thing, I do have a trophy shop in Northridge, and one of the services that we provide, unfortunately, we're a nonprofit organization, not by choice, but we don't do it for the money, we really don't. I've been blessed, and I thank God every day for everything that I have. But you and your councils, if you have police officers, and I do this for three of the office in my area, that want their batons engraved, their gun clips engraved, and their handcuffs engraved, we're going to have one day in June where they can come in, it's absolutely free, there's no recognition or anything, just in case I get a speeding ticket, I hope they remember my face. But besides that, anytime, please contact the councilman. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Recognize Mr. Zine for a second presentation.
Perfect timing, perfect timing. Maggie Whelan, if you'll please come join me, the general manager of the Personnel Department. Earlier this morning, we did Career Service Award Ceremony of Recognition in the Rotunda, and we honored many of these people and their families who are here joining them. So what we want to do now is announce their names and let the public know of the good work that the city employees do for the people of Los Angeles. It gives me great pleasure to once again participate in the Career Service Award Ceremony. This year, we are honoring 21 individual city employees in three groups for their exemplary service to the people of the City of Los Angeles. And as I call your name or group's name, I ask that attendings please stand. And after we do this, we will meet in the back room and do some more photographs in our media room. The first three individuals being recognized for performing service beyond the call of duty to a person or persons whose life, safety, or health was in jeopardy, those individuals are David Christler, James Reo, and Dave Rowan. If you'll please stand and be recognized. If you'll please stand, so we can get the camera on you, gentlemen, if we can get camera focused on them, and if you can raise the certificate, the recognition that we've got, each of the recipients received these plaques recognizing the good work that they've done. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next group being recognized for having received recognition from their department or other agency or organization for unusual services, Ted Gaussem, Northeast Inspector Sewer Inspection Team. Ted? The next individual being recognized for handling the public exceptionally well, Willie Bradford. Willie Bradford.
You have to go back and enlarge the team.
Oh, okay, okay. And I, well, we had Ted we honored for the one category, we also had the Northeast Inspector Sewer Inspection Team, if we can have them all recognized, that's a whole team there. I'm sorry, I thought Ted was the team, just not part of the team. And lastly, being recognized for demonstrating outstanding dedication to duty or outstanding leadership qualities. And these are the individuals that we're going to call, but I also want to recognize our manager, General Services, our manager, Personnel Department General Manager Maggie Whelan, and her crew of people who helped put this whole program together. If we can hear acknowledgement from Maggie and her team of people from the Personnel Harriet Leetz, Harriet, 30, how many years?
Six.
36 years, 36 years with the City of Los Angeles. Larry K. Meyerhofer. Alicia Vega. Stuart Young. Mark J. Willardson. Ricardo Villacorta. Juliana Chang. Mary Ann Gonzalez. Excuse me, Mr. Labange? I don't know. We already did that earlier. If you would have been, you would have known. All I have is the names, Mr. Labange, I'm following the script, Mr. Labange. Peter Persick. Cynthia Starks. Craig Blumquist. Paul Racks. Philip L. Richardson. Rodney Lucas. Carl Jones. The Santa Monica Inspection Team. Jack Weiss-Yott acknowledged them. They're the ones who are taking care of Santa Monica Boulevard, that is the team taking care of that renovation. And Adele H. Hagel-Kalahill.
Why don't you have them all stand at once?
Attention. These individuals come from the departments, and Mr. Labange asked the departments, and we commented on that earlier, they come from many departments throughout the City of Los Angeles, from the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Contract Administration, from the Zoo Department, from the Finance Department, from the... Department, from the Office of City Clerk, Emergency Preparedness Department, the Fire Department, Department of General Services, the Harbor Department, Library Department, Office of Accounting, Contract Administration...I'm almost done. The Bureau of Engineering, Wastewater Engineering Service Division, Street Lighting, Transportation, Contract Administration, all the departments, and those individuals were recognized, and we acknowledge them for their wonderful work for the city of Los Angeles. Also, if I can acknowledge their family members, if they'll please stand, members of the family who are here today joining us, recognizing their loved ones. Thank you, Mr. President, and with all the groups, if we'll converge in the back, and we'll do some photographs in our media room. Again, congratulations to our Career Service Awards for our wonderful city employees. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Congratulations to all of our employees. We're very proud of the work that you do in making Los Angeles a better city each and every day. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom Labadj from the Fourth Council District for two special presentations as well.
Peter. Good job. Domena. Young G. Escort him.
Mr. Labadj? You're going to wait? Okay. While we're waiting for one second, why don't we run through the agenda real quick? Let us know, Mr. Labadj, if there's anything you want to call special. Colleagues, we're going to run through the agenda while we're waiting for the room to clear. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labadj moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. If there's no objection, that's unanimous vote and approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Ms. Gruehl seconds. If there's no objection, that too is unanimous vote and approved.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue two items, Items 27 and 31 to July 14th.
Okay, colleagues, is there any objection to continuing Items 27 and 31 till the 14th? If not, we will continue those. Next items?
On the regular agenda, Items 1, 2, and 3 are items noted for public hearing, and they are street lighting ordinances, and I believe 12 council members will be present today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold all ordinances on the desk as we go along.
Item number four is also a public hearing item, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearings and ordinances to June 9th.
Okay, we will open that public hearing and continue the ordinance to the 9th of June.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 5 through 9. Items 5 through 7 are ord...so that would leave before Council 8 through 19.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials, 8 through 19? Mr. Padilla? 11 for Mr. Padilla. Any other specials, colleagues?
And Mr. President, just for council's information, there are two reports on Item Number 19. A motion is required.
Are those reports conflicting at all?
They are similar. I believe there's a little difference in the wording, and there is an additional recommendation on the arts parks.
Okay. Mr. Labadj and Mr. Parks, there's two reports for this Item Number 19. One is arts and parks, and one is budget and finance.
No, we asked that the budget and finance, because we altered one of the directions on arts parks that causes the department to come back to the council on new grants as opposed to giving them the authority to do it on their own.
Mr. Labadj, is that all right with you? If it comes back to council? Okay, we'll move the budget and finance report then. Any other...any other specials? If not, let's open the roll on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote, please.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Let's hold 20 through 26 on the table as well.
And that would leave before Council 28, 29, and 32 through 50. And I believe there is a substitute motion on Number 41.
On which one?
On Item Number 41. That hasn't been distributed yet.
Okay, colleagues, any specials on these items? Mr. Labadj?
President, very special, Number 30, the Derby, Brown Derby. Thirty.
Okay, we'll call Number 30 special for Mr. Labadj. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing...we're holding 20 through 26 on the table. Any other specials? Okay, colleagues, if there's no other specials, we'll open roll on the balance. There's no other cards, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. President, just on Item Number 30, which was called special by Councilmember Labadj.
Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Any other items?
No, that's all for the regular agenda.
Okay, we'll return to the presentations now. Mr. Labadj?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Last week, on Friday, it was a glorious day, but I made an air. I made a communication air to our great honoree for Pioneer Woman, and I have with us today our Pioneer Woman. So I apologize for the week delay, but the spotlight's on you, Adrian Albert. Give her a big hand. Adrian, as you may know, is a member of the Eyewitness News Team and a general assignment reporter since 1996. She is...came from San Diego, where she grew up, attended local schools there, was at Aztec at San Diego State, got her degree in journalism, and landed her first job with KSDO News Radio in San Diego. She is absolutely a wonderful person who overcame a great challenge. As you all may recall, Adrian was injured in an industrial accident as a reporter off of Santa Monica Boulevard in Gower, where the new vans that they had, there was an electrical shock, and she was severely injured in that. But she fought back. She fought back with the love of her husband Barry and her family, and she truly is an outstanding person. I chose her because of all she does in the community, not just as an Eyewitness News reporter, but also as someone who's involved in the Toluca Lake area, with Toluca baseball, involved with other programs, and she's truly an outstanding woman. So if you could, Mr. President, and all my colleagues and all here in the John Ferraro Chamber, salute Adrian Albert as the 2006 Pioneer Woman Award for the Los Angeles Commission on the Status of Women for your exemplary service, Adrian. Congratulations.
Shy as I am about public speaking, I'll just thank you all, councilmen, for this award, and for my husband for supporting me these years on the way back. Getting this award, even though it was delayed by a week, actually makes it more significant for me because it is almost six years to the day that I had my accident. It was May 22nd, 2000. And seven months later, I was able to come back to work with the support of my colleagues at Channel 7, and with my family, and all those who helped put me back together. And I'm back working, and I'm glad to see you. I feel uncomfortable on this side of the mic, but I'll be interviewing you all again, I'm sure, soon, and I promise not to pitch any softball questions to you, even though this is a nice award.
How about if we have a few questions for you today?
Good job. Congratulations. Let's give Adrian Albert, our Pioneer Woman, a big hand. Adrian, also, a wonderful fellow for you. To cap off the recognition, a loaf of pumpkin bread, because Adrian Albert is an angel in the City of Angels. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. We're going to sit there and put up a picture. Also, Mr. President, we're going to have someone from the city family who's very special join me right now, and I asked Rich Llewellyn from the City Attorney's Office right there. Please give a big, warm welcome to Frank Orozco. Frank has a great history with the City of Los Angeles. He's retired after 31 years. And as I begin this presentation with Frank, I'd like to ask all those from the City Attorney's Office to stand up and give Frank another hand. Frank joined the City of Los Angeles in September of 1976 as a Deputy City Attorney, and he was assigned to the Criminal Division. Over the years, he's been assigned to many of the both Criminal and Civil Division, but he especially became skilled in working with us, the City Council, as counsel for many city departments, be it the Zoo Cultural Affairs, be it the Department of Animal Services, the Office of Finance, or even General Services. He's worked with all these committees in our office. We know how much we benefit by his counsel on that. But what is great, too, about Frank, that he is a true Angelino. He's a toiler from manual arts. He was a great veteran who served the United States Army in the occupied forces in West Germany and the European Command. After he came back from the service, he went to East Los Angeles College, where he received his AA degree, and transferred to Whittier College to get his BA degree. He majored in the great subject of sociology. See, that's why I like you, Frank. I'm a sociology major, too. Give sociology a big hand, everybody. Come on, lawyers. Thank you, Richard. But then, he continued his education by attending the University of California Davis School of Law and graduated with a degree in 1975. He's a board member of various nonprofit organizations, including the Whittier Rio Hondo AIDS Project, and was Board President 1999 to 2001. Frank is father to his son, Frank Jr., who's a Deputy City Attorney in the Criminal Branch. Elena Orozco, a pharmacist technician at Kaiser in Brea, and his grandfather's Francesca Mendoza, granddaughter. Excuse me. We're going to correct that, Frank. We didn't have the City Attorney's Office read that. That's why we made a little error there. Correct that. She's a super athlete and student at La Habra, California. Before I read "Now, for there be resolved," let me say what's great about Frank, too. On a very critical environmental issue years ago, out there at what was called the Pottery Plant there on Las Feliz Boulevard, the Francesca Pottery Plant, Frank led the way to help us clean up what was a very toxic site. He made sure it was done efficiently and correctly. He did a wonderful job at supervising, because I think there was over 4,000 truckloads taken to a special landfill to deal with this heavy environmental issue. Frank supervised that. It was very critical because it was such a large parcel. From that, we were able to build a successful shopping center, which includes a Costco and other stores as well. But Frank Orozco is truly a great Angelino and a great member of the city family for 31 years. Before I present this resolution formally to him, I'm going to ask Rich Llewellyn, Chief City Attorney for Rocky Doggedale, for a few remarks. Rich Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mr. Labadj. I just want to briefly say that Frank represents, I think, one of the best things about our office, someone who cares about the city, someone whose son, in fact, is a part of our office. And you see many of the young attorneys here who have gone to Frank, and Frank is one of the people, despite his youth, with one of our gray beards, who actually our young attorneys rely on every day. And it's a tremendous loss. We thank him for his years of service. We thank him for leaving his son, serving after him, and we look forward to his grandson and daughter joining our office.
Thank you, Rich. Frank's plan in retirement is to travel a lot, so I'm going to ask him to join our Sister City program. We've got 20 Sister Cities here. We could use a great contributor. Please, join with me now, right now, and give Frank Orozco a big hand for 31 years of service for the City of Los Angeles. Thanks, Frank. I appreciate it.
And Frank, before we hear from you and while you're taking pictures, we have a couple council members that would like to add their thoughts, starting with Ms. Gruehl and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Frank, for your years of service. We were kind of reminiscing this morning, and I said, "They made you work on your last day here in council." But Frank and I met in the '80s on homeless issues and some challenging things that we did during that time, which now are part of our system. But Frank was the go-to guy, still has been, in the City Attorney's Office to think outside the box, and loved his job and loved being able to figure out the problem and give us the advice. And so Frank, I can't believe that it's, I think you said, with your...about 31 years in government service. And I just want to thank you for being that kind of shining light in the City Attorney's Office and for being a good friend to me during that time, and always picking up the phone, whether it be early in the morning or late at night, or, you know, just spending hours trying to figure out how we would help solve some of the challenges on the homeless issue. So congratulations on your retirement. Actually enjoy yourself, and I just think you've been a great asset to the City of Los Angeles. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruehl. Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry, would you like to add your thoughts?
Frank, I know it's been said before, but I have to say it one more time. You were probably the person in the building who had the greatest variety of hairstyles. That I will remember you for that, and I remember that for the issues over which you presided and gave us sound legal advice, but you did it with a ponytail, you did it with short hair, you did it with medium-length hair. And I got to say, I'm going to remember you for that. So thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Frank Orozco.
I want to thank this council here today, past members of the City Council, for giving me this opportunity to work with you over the years. I want to thank all of my colleagues in the City Attorney's Office, past and present, for giving me such wonderful support and camaraderie. I think it's been a great experience working for the city. I never thought I would last this many years, but somehow I did manage to enjoy it. And as Wendy said, we worked on things that were very different, very unconventional, and we came up with solutions sometimes, and sometimes we didn't, but we never stopped trying. And I'm grateful to the city for having employed me over these great number of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. Labadj. And congratulations again, Frank. Ms. Perry, is your other presentation? You ready? Yes, while Ms. Perry's coming forward, I'll recognize Mr. Weiss for an introduction.
Kids from Warner Avenue, where are you guys? Warner Avenue? Okay, colleagues, back here waving. Come on, kids, everybody with your hands up waving. Camera folks, can you catch them over there? We have third graders from Warner Avenue Elementary School visiting us. Come on, not me. Camera over them in the corner. All right, we'll get you guys...there they are. Okay, wave, guys. Left, left, wrong way, camera. All right, we'll get you on TV in a minute. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Parks?
Are we getting there? I'd like to introduce a group of young people in the back from the 8th District, from the KIPP Academy in South Los Angeles. They're here with their teacher, Andre Bolinger. Kids, wave your hands and say hello.
Welcome to City Hall. It's wonderful to have you here. Thank you all very much for those two introductions, and Ms. Perry is our next presenter. Be joined by Mr. Weisar.
Okay, whatever you want. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I am joined with Councilman Weisar today to honor a very special person, a person who is a longtime Los Angeles Unified School District teacher and an advocate for young people, and his name is Sal Castro. Today, we honor him for his work as the founder of the Chicano Youth Leadership Conference in 1963 and the legacy that his involvement has created for the future. Recently, Mr. Castro was honored at an event that explored the issues of education and reform in our public schools, and today... reform in our public schools, and today, I wanted to, along with Mr. Weisar, take the opportunity to honor him here in our council chambers. Historically, the series of Chicano Youth Leadership Conferences are the most recognized high school leadership conference in California. Over the past 43 years, CYLC has prepared several generations of Chicana or Chicano leaders and has contributed to the community in a manner that has no equal. The alumni of the conference series include a state Supreme Court Justice, several LAUSD superintendents, many LAUSD principals and teachers, members of the United States Congress, county supervisors, our mayor, and a growing number of university professors. Alumni also include members of the print and electronic media, filmmakers, producers, artists, and members of almost every profession. At the center of the Chicano Youth Leadership Conference is Mr. Castro, Teacher Castro, a lifelong Los Angeles Unified School teacher who earned a national reputation as a school reformer. CYLC was founded in 1963 in response to the harsh reality that Chicano students fared last in education. Dropout rates exceeded any other ethnicity, and the likelihood of Chicanos attending a college or university was very low. CYLC brought together groups of high school students at Camp Hess Kramer with the primary objective of encouraging the students, participants, to graduate from high school, enter college, graduate, and seek advanced degrees to become responsible leaders. This has been ongoing for over four decades, and it is as important today as it was in 1963. So today, I'm pleased to take this opportunity, along with Mr. Weisar, in honoring this very special teacher. The work he started continues to be important for all of us and for the young people here in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to stand here with Councilwoman Jan Perry to really recognize a true hero, a person who has impacted thousands and thousands of lives, giving many children and showing them that there is life outside of the vadio, that there is life and possibility, and that college is possible. I first heard about Sal Castro when I was a Chicano Studies major at UC Berkeley, and we read about the Famous Thirteen, the thirteen who were jailed because of them standing up for the rights of students in East LA who had walked out of schools because they felt they were not receiving an equal education. If many of you saw the movie Walkout, you would see that Sal Castro was a hero in that movie, that Sal Castro was the leader in making it possible for these students to stand up and say, "Ya basta, no más." Students of all colors, students of all income levels, students irrespective of who their parents are, deserve an equal education in this country. After I had heard about Sal Castro, I saw him as my hero. And when I was on the school board, Sal Castro called my office to meet about possibly supporting the Chicano Latino Youth Leadership Project, and I was so thrilled. I was a young school board member, just been in office a few months, and here I was going to meet one of the heroes I had read about in college. He walked in, and I was just so honored to be in his presence, having someone in my office who had done so much for so many students. And what I noticed most about Sal Castro that day was that he has a huge, huge heart. He really believes in what he's doing, and it was very easy for me, as a school board member, to continue supporting the work that Sal Castro has done for decades and continues to do. I went to go visit the center where he provides students an opportunity to learn more about their culture, because we do not often provide the type of curriculum that reflects these students' histories in that curriculum. Or do we not always tell these students that they, too, can go on to college irrespective of the many challenges they face in their community and their schools? Sal Castro is the epitome of what it means when the Latino community says so proudly, "Si se puede." Sal Castro, on behalf of the city council and Councilwoman Jan Perry, we salute you and thank you so much for having a big heart and for all you've done to improve the lives of so many children here in Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Let me just add my thank yous as well, Mr. Castro, Sal, for being a friend for many years to my family and to me, and inspiring not only myself, but I know my father, and some of his work since he left public life is focused really on making sure that Latino students here in the city of Los Angeles don't drop out and stay in school. And the work that you've done is, when you're at Belmont, in terms of your Leadership Academy, was something that set the bar and built on the activism of the 60s of our young people and gave them a positive way to continue to be active, but to push them to do the best that they could. So thank you very much, and with that, we'd love to hear from you.
Teacher Castro, what are your instructions?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Octavio Pescaudor. Good morning to you all. It is a pleasure to be here with you to honor Maestro Sal Castro. We are very pleased that Councilman Weisar and Councilwoman Perry accepted our request and quarterly brought us here. We are bringing, on behalf of the Chicano Youth Leadership Conference, a gift for every one of the council members here. It's a painting, a set of paintings by my wife, Anna Pescaudor, who is here, and is a friend of Sal. We respect Sal and the work of Sal, and it's simply an act of reciprocity to participate in this meeting. We thank you very much, and here is now El Gran Maestro Sal Castro.
Muchas gracias, and as usual, the students will speak for me. These are students from Roosevelt, from Belmont High School, Lincoln High School, and I forget, Garfield High School. Thank you very much.
Say your name. Good morning. My name is Eva Gonzalez. I am a junior at Belmont High School, and I am 16 years old. I am an active member in our school's leadership, and I participate in the tennis team during the summer. When I first, when I was first told about the Chicano Youth Leadership Conference, I was told that it would be a life-changing experience, and I had my doubts. But that day, when I got on the bus to go to camp, to the camp, I realized it was no lie. We were there for three very short days, but it really was a life-changing experience. We were there for the three days. I arrived hoping to one day attend a four-year university, hoping, but as the days went by, we realized how grateful we were for the experience. As I left camp that Sunday afternoon, I wasn't hoping anymore. I knew that one day I would attend the college that I had so hardly strived for. What I do hope for now is to one day pursue a career in NASA, which I really will work hard for, because that is what I want to do, but all I can say is that without the help from the camp and from Sal, of course, I would have never had the inspiration I have now, and that is what pulls, what makes me, helps me get through the days in high school, which are very hard, and I'm sure it will get harder, but I'm just very thankful.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Lemus. I'm a junior at Garfield High School. I'm an active student in the tennis team, track and field, dancing, drama, and the scholarship, I mean, the California Scholarship Federation. I attended the Chicano Youth Leadership Program Conference, I'm sorry, in the March of 2006, and I have to say that it was an amazing experience. Every minute of that conference was full with knowledge and joy everywhere. I was motivated to reach for my dreams and my goals, no matter how high or difficult they are. I want to major in business management with fashion merchandise, and this conference gave me the confidence that I need to be ready for the competitive world. I am so thankful and very honored to have taken part in this, in the Chicano Youth Leadership Conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I would, we do have Channel 35 set up as well to be able to see everybody in the back as well. We, under our council rules, we're trying to keep presentations to six minutes, but that means each one of you can speak and still be seen by the 50,000 people on Channel 35, so I'd just suggest that, too.
Good morning. My name is Daniela Ramirez. I am a senior at Lincoln High School. I am the vice president of Metcha, and I am also in the magnet program. I will be attending El Comino College in the fall and transferring to USC. I plan to major in psychology with a minor in Chicano Studies. My career goal is to become a secondary school counselor. I attended CYLC in the spring of 2005. For me, CYLC opened up a whole new world, when, before I was ignorant of my culture, I am now very proud of where I come from and of who I am. In those three short days, my life was changed for the better. It made me realize the importance of an educated, of an education, of how critical it is to be educated. I am grateful for the opportunity to have attended CYLC. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jose Ries, and I am the C-TRI Student Body President at Belmont High School. I am a graduate of the Chicano Youth Leadership Conference, the spring of 2006. I will attend UC Santa Cruz in the fall and will major in business administration and political science. The CYLC gave me not only the courage, but it also inspired me to further education and to graduate. I plan to return to my community as a professional and pursue other students to a higher-quality education. The CYLC did not only give me the courage, but it also made me an advocate of my community for a higher education. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Salvalla. I'm a senior at Abraham Lincoln High School, and all I have to say is it's an honor to be here and to be able to attend the CYLC. Thank you.
There are a few words that I have. I want to introduce my grandson, my number-one grandson, from Washington Irving Middle School. Seventh grader, he's going on to Marshall High School. And the few words that I have is, I wanted to, it's a great honor to be here today with, in the forum where the descendants of the first city council reside today. Members of the first city council in 1850, which included Vicente del Campo, Manuel Requena, José Vicente Herrero, Julián Chávez, Chávez Ravín, Cristóbal Aguilar. The city assessor was Antonio Francisco Coronel. The city treasurer was Francisco Figueroa, Figueroa Street. The first teacher was Francisco Bustamante. The elected inspector was Ignacio Coronel, and the first police commissioner in chief was Manuel Requena. It's an honor to be with you, descendants of these folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castro. Mr. Labonge?
Sal Castro, Sal Castro, I, members, I'm sorry, I was out with Frank Orozco, our city attorney, deputy city attorney, who's retired. I will watch this to see your presentation, but we're with one of the great Angelinos, and I don't know if you mentioned the days that you used to coach Little League, and you mentioned who you coached? Did you mention to everybody? Well, you gotta mention it, because it's amazing what happens when you're a young man like Sal Castro, and all the work that he did at Lincoln High School, but he coached someone who's very special to this state. Mike Haynes. Mike Haynes, but also, more than that, you coached a member of the Supreme Court. Supreme Court, yes, the Supreme Court, Carlos Moreno. I know days he was Chucky Moreno, at Chucky Moreno at Solano Avenue School, later at Belmont High School, and today, state's Supreme Court Justice, and to me, he's still Justice Chucky Moreno. That's right. Okay. Thank you, Sal Castro. Congratulations. Thank you for being a wonderful Angelino. By the way, Councilman Labonge was the coach of my son, Jimmy, and Jimmy's here today. All right, good. Where's Jimmy? Yeah, he was a Marshall football coach. That's right. Marshall lost a lot of games, but he was a Marshall football coach. Yeah, but we beat Lincoln.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castro. Thank you, Sal. Our next presentation will be from Council District Two. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Wendy Gruel.
Thank you. I did a great job. You did a great job. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And I know Joe Avila, was he, where did he go? Joe, come on up here. Because Joe was the inspiration today for this resolution. And colleagues, it is my pleasure and honor to recognize Coach Larson from UCLA today. During his 15 years at the helm of the UCLA program, Bob Larson was a four-time National Coach of the Year, three in track and one in cross-country, and nine-time Pac-10 Coach of the Year, guiding the Bruins to a 118-3-1 dual meet record, two NCAA outdoor championship titles, and nine Pac-10 conference titles. Wow, that's incredible. During his 21-year coaching tenure at UCLA, Mr. Parks, where are you? He never lost a dual meet to archrival USC. This is the most prestigious collegiate dual-track meet in America. He also had 12 unbeaten seasons, including five of his last six years as head coach. He has been honored as the USTCA National Men's Coach of the Year, the USTCA District Eight Men's Coach of the Year, and has been included in the Mount SAC Relays Coaches Hall of Fame, California Community College Cross Country Hall of Fame, and Track Coaches Association Hall of Fame, and the USTCA Hall of Fame. After retiring in UCLA in 2000, he began organizing a club called Team USA California, designed to support and develop promising post-collegiate Olympic hopefuls in the distance races. Former Bruin star, and I'm not gonna, can you tell me, how do you pronounce that?
Meb Keflaske.
There you go, Meb, yeah, there you go. And Agurra, California native, Deena Castor formed the nucleus of the program. In 2004, Bob Larson was named men's distance coach for the 2004 U.S. Olympic Team held in Athens, Greece, where?
Meb.
Meb, okay, we'll call him Meb. Won the silver medal in the men's marathon, and Deena Castor won the bronze medal in the women's marathon, the first time in history when the United States won both the men's and women's marathon medals at the same Olympic Games. In 2005, he was honored by the National Long Distance Running Hall of Fame with the Bill Bowerman Award, and by the USATF with the H. Browning Ross Memorial Award. Colleagues, I hope you will join me today in commemorating and commending Coach Bob Larson for his years of tireless dedication and outstanding service to our youth. He is a shining example and role model for his unserving commitment to our, unswerving commitment to our nation's athletes. We wish him continued happiness and good health and more years of success. And just thank you, Coach, for your leadership at UCLA, your role model for our students. We talked yesterday with the USOC about having the Olympics here in 2016, so we hope that will happen and that you will be by our side, making sure it is one of the most successful Olympics. If we could give a great round of applause for Coach Bob Larson. And you'll tell me all the people you have behind you in the meet, and I know, Mr. Labonge, just want to say something.
Mr. Labonge? I want to thank Wendy Gruel for bringing a great track coach in. Track and field is one of the most important, most toughest, because you gotta train by your own. It's not like a total team where you're five guys playing basketball, or nine on a baseball, or 11 on a football team and all that, but track, the individual inspiration. And I know UCLA has had many great track athletes, and it's a wonderful game and wonderful sport, and I just want to congratulate you, Coach, for the extra effort you did. And I mentioned it again, my mentor was Milt Davis, who was a track guy from Jefferson High School, who went to City College, who went to UCLA, and Duffy Drake, the track coach then, introduced him to Red Sanders, and the rest is history, just like we were talking about Sal Castro. You never know where you end up, but the inspiration that coaches give is the ones who are shooting stars. Thank you, Coach. Good job.
Thank you, and I know, Coach, I'd like to present this proclamation to you, in that you have your family and supporters and people who were touched by your coaching and commitment to each of them. So on behalf of the entire city council, the mayor, the city attorney, the comptroller, we want to present this resolution to you and thank you for your years of service. Congratulations, Bob.
Wonderful moment, and to share this with other very deserving people in Los Angeles here is something that we'll remember and cherish forever. I'd also like to point out a few people are here with me, and starting with my wife, My son Eric is right behind me here. We have Associate Athletic Director at UCLA, Bob Field, over here. Bob. Bob, thank you for being here. And the rest of the guys up here behind me, I recently developed a bald spot in the back of my head, so I needed guys to cover me from the audience in the back here. I try to avoid being in this position, but it's unavoidable today. But I first want to thank Joe Avila. This group of runners was among the first guys at UCLA with me, and they won championship cross-country titles that set the bar high for those to come and also helped us put UCLA track and field at an even higher level, especially in the distance running events. And first, again, Joe Avila, who made all this possible. Joe, thank you very much. I know he's moving on to another position, I think his last day here. Good. And then we have Captain Steve Webb. We have Don Moses, Dave Shriver. Have Dave Daniels, who's still a school record holder in the steeplechase at UCLA. And we have Mahawi Keflezgi, Meb's younger brother, who just got his law degree from UCLA. And thank you very much for being here. And thank you again for this proclamation. Wonderful moment for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have one more presentation left that, oh, Mr. Parks? I know Mr. Smith is here, I was just gonna finish the sentence, that we have one more presentation that I'm giving, but I was gonna hold on that so that we can run through the ordinances. Does that address what you were going to talk, okay?
Special agenda, special one.
Right.
Then I think we could get that.
We can adjourn. Let me do this first for any of the items that there are not cards on from the ordinances, which is, I believe, just number one. Now that we have 12 members, let's run two, three, five through seven, and 20 through 26 of the regular meeting. I'll say that again. It would be number two and number three, number five, six, and seven, and then 20 through 26. Okay? If there's nobody who wishes to call those special, let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
We will still return to special, I mean, to item number one, which there's a card for. Now, if we can adjourn the regular meeting, please call the roll for the special meeting, recess, excuse me, and call the roll for the special meeting.
Cardiniss Gruel, Han, Wizar Labonge, Padia Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosanel Smith, Vice Lieutenant Zain Garcetti, 12 members present, and a core, Mr. President.
Okay, first items.
First item is item number one, and that ad hoc stadium report has been submitted and distributed to the council members, and there is an ordinance on the file.
Okay, I know there's seven members on that committee, so we've had a good vigorous public airing of that. Anybody wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. And number two, we'll call special for cards from the public, that's special two. We'll send forthwith on number one from the special meeting. We can go back to the regular meeting now, and I will now do the final presentation. Mr. Zain, did you want to say something?
President, I've been informed that an individual presented a card on number 12. It was approved on consent and requested that we reconsider and have that individual the opportunity to speak on number 12. If the individual's still in chambers, individual's still in chambers on that matter? We're not gonna speak now, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, after the next presentation, we can take that matter up. Mr. Zain?
Thank you very much, Madam President. For our final presentation this morning, I want to congratulate a very special person who is a CD-13 constituent, but also a chief management analyst and a longtime contributor here in the city of Los Angeles, a chief management analyst at Lasers, taking care of, I know, the retirement of so many people that are here in this room and making sure that this city continues to be the best-managed big city in America. Sandra Dyson, Chief Management Analyst, is retiring from Lasers. She retired, actually, on April 16th, after serving the citizens of Los Angeles for 31 years. On January 6th, 1975, when I was three, Sandra accepted the position of administrative intern and was subsequently promoted to management assistant with the Personnel Department, where she was instrumental in developing and presenting training programs for city employees, including the first affirmative action for supervisors training, which in the '70s was a very important and groundbreaking thing to be able to do, something we take for granted now, but the pioneers who helped us do it really established that foundation for each one of us. On July 31st, 1977, she was promoted to administrative assistant with the Los Angeles Police Department and worked in Council District 13 as the analytical officer at Hollywood Division. She then transferred to the Department of Building and Safety, her third department, on October 16th, 1977, where she handled special projects, including the rent control ordinance, rent stabilization ordinance here in the city of Los Angeles, which of course affects so many people's lives in a positive way here in Los Angeles. On February 24th, 1980, Sandra accepted a promotion to Senior Personnel Analyst with the Personnel Department, where she was responsible for the firefighter examination under the consent decree. Again, a very tough assignment, but the testing and hiring of the city's first female firefighters was undertaken then, and quite successfully, I should add. And she subsequently managed the city's vocational rehabilitation program under workers' compensation. She then accepted a transfer to the office of the Chief of Police on August 8th, 1988, where she served as a senior management representative in the Employee Relations Division, providing day-to-day human resource services and advice to department managers, successfully handling grievances, arbitrations, hearings, and establish effective working relationships with employee organizations. And I understand she kept Dennis Zine in line there, too, while she was at the Los Angeles Police Department. On August 16th, 1994, she was promoted to Senior Management Analyst II with the Los Angeles Police Department, where she was responsible for criminal identification, information services, and crime and arrest records archiving. She also served with the department's AFIS manager, sorry, excuse me, providing liaison between the Sheriff's Department and the California Department of Justice, the Information Technology Agency, various vendors in the department. She worked diligently towards major upgrades to AFIS, as well as the implementation of electronic transmission of fingerprints and digital mugshots from booking sites of the department and making sure that the state archives and local archives were part of that, too. She also implemented the department's ICARS, or ECARS?
ICARS.
ICARS system that holds crime and arrest reports. As if that wasn't enough, in 1999, she accepted a Senior Personnel Analyst II position with the Department of Water and Power. I'm amazed with how many departments and what a wide variety of positions you've had in your career. It says a lot about who you are and your skills and your willingness to go to different departments and how valuable I'm sure you were at each one. But at Department of Water and Power Employee Relations Division, she was their Senior Personnel Analyst II and then became a Senior Management Analyst II position with the Lasers program here in 2000. And she was promoted to Chief Management there on March 25th, 2001, performing duties of Chief Health Benefits Administration, handling the transition of health plans from the Personnel Department, and was instrumental in establishing effective strategies to control the increases in healthcare costs. And I think we've all benefited from that. We're so lucky that this city, as we've seen other cities become bankrupt and have financial difficulties, it's work like yours that has allowed the city to be able to provide healthcare at a reasonable cost for everybody. You've served the citizens of Los Angeles in so many ways, volunteering in programs to assist the homeless in the Mid-Wilshire area, as the member of the Los Angeles City Task Force on Family Diversity, the World Affairs Council, of which I'm a member as well, volunteering to strengthen communications and family relationships as well through her church activities. So she has earned the respect of staff members and managers alike due to her clearly exceptional leadership. And this career, which is enshrined here in this beautiful resolution, begins to only touch on the lives that you have been able to affect. Her evaluation reports called her a definite asset, a superior employee who has unique and varied talent. So join me today in congratulating, after 31 years of service to the city of Los Angeles, Sandra Dyson, and wish her well on her retirement. Please give her a hearty thank you for her amazing service to the people of Los Angeles. And I see you have a number of fans here as well who are here. Please, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Garcetti. I want to say thanks also to your staff for preparing this resolution so it could be presented to me today. I've appreciated the opportunity to serve the citizens as well as staff and council in my 31 years of service with the city. I've had a wide variety of jobs, all of which I have enjoyed and all of which I have met so many talented people. I think you can be proud of your city employees. Most of us are very dedicated, hardworking, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Next item, Madam Clerk. Do we have any more presentations?
No, I believe that's all.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Padia has an introduction.
Elementary, please stand up. Colleagues, we have a group of students visiting from Canterbury Elementary in Arlita, which is actually in Mr. Carvanas's district. But on behalf of both of us, want to welcome Ms. Annette Antilla, Ms. Irma Correa, and Mrs. Miriam Jones, they're teachers, and they're students here at City Hall. We have a great tour and visit lined up for them. Web kits, you guys, can be on TV tonight. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padia. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Madam President, council, there's a public comment on items not on council's agenda that hasn't been taken up as yet.
All right, first order of business under public comment, Rebecca Gonzalez Tobias.
Thank you very much. I'm here to speak on behalf of South Central Farm, also representing the Green Party here in Los Angeles. I have a brief statement from a press release. Not only the California State Green Party, but also the National Green Party, has taken this issue under their wing. Greens' appeal to the L.A. mayor, "Don't destroy this garden. This is the largest urban farm in the U.S. It's to be destroyed and paved over." Green Party activists, including 2006 gubernatorial candidate Peter Miguel Comajo and former Santa Monica Mayor Mike Feinstein, expressed their full support today for community farmers and are trying to save the nation's largest urban farm from being bulldozed. The Greens urged people to participate in a major "save the farm from inbound bulldozers" demonstration that is being held here today. The downtown 14-acre plot located at Alameda and 41st Street has been sustaining 360 families by providing healthy fruits, vegetables, and medicinal plants since 1994, supplementing their household budgets. At a major news conference last Thursday, concerned citizens, community leaders, and various civic organizations, representatives from the Bus Riders Union, Mecha Students, the Los Angeles Indigenous Peoples Alliance, and others called for the need to save the community farm from being bulldozed and turned into a warehouse. "This is a beautiful model of the kinds of things we need to start seeing in America," said Peter Comajo at a news conference earlier at the site. He underscored what the garden symbolizes, adding that if the mayor of Los Angeles acted as green as he said he is, he wouldn't think twice about saving the farm. We need the mayor's support.
Thank you very much. Michael Feinstein? Okay, Mr. Feinstein has decided not to speak. Linda Piera Avila. Followed by Ross Placette.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Linda Piera Avila. I'm the Secretary of the Los Angeles Greens. And I also, like Rebecca, I'm here to speak to you this morning about the issue of the South Central Farm. Since many of you have not visited the farm yet, I thought that I would bring you a picture. And first of all, I should introduce you to Manuel. Manuel is one of the farmers at the South Central Farm. And this is a picture, I hope the camera can get it. This is a picture of Manuel on his plot at the farm with his corn. He has like the most beautiful plot there at the farm. He raises vegetables to feed his grandchildren. He's farmed it for 13 years. He retired from the gas company before that. The other point, so I just wanted to share that with you. An analogy I want to make with the South Central Farm is with like the red car. Years ago, the city of L.A. had the red car, the best transportation in the city, mass transit. The city allowed businesses to rip up the red car. Now we have traffic congestion, air pollution, and we're trying desperate, we're behind the eight ball to put in rapid transit over existing infrastructure. And the red car, the South Central Farm can be an analogous situation. Here we have an example of sustainable food production in an urban agricultural setting. And this model needs to be replicated around the country, around the city. We need to learn from the farmers and not displace them. Many urban planners predict that we will be facing food transportation shortages in the very near future, either because of a pandemic or because of a Katrina-type of disaster or because of shortage of cheap oil. And when that food-transportation system is disrupted, we're all gonna need to know how to grow our own food. And I really hope that the city of Los Angeles will not make the same mistake again due to lack of foresight. Don't let the South Central Farm become this century's red car. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Byron Delir. Byron Delir, to be followed by Lindsay Akuta.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Byron Delir. I'm running for Congress in the San Fernando Valley. I wanted to thank the city council for letting me speak a few words on behalf of the South Central Farm. We have a sacred plot of land in our city, and that is the South Central Farm. It is the largest urban farm in the United States. This is a national treasure. Indeed, it's worthy of being a national monument. This is the beginning evidences of sustainability. And I have to just humbly offer the council that we are going to see a shift towards decentralized economic concern. And if there is an opportunity to employ eminent domain in regard to commercial projects and economic concerns, I think that for once, we should employ eminent domain to reclaim this land, to protect these lower and middle-income wage earners that are supplementing their household income by providing food for themselves. And also, I would like to just say that this is a model, again, that needs to be replicated not only in Los Angeles, but in cities all across the United States and indeed across the planet. And so if there's any way that Jan Perry or Mayor Antonio Vega Rosa can come and stand up and fight for these farmers and fight for these local community, these community members to support this farm, I would encourage it with all due diligence. Thank you. It's Byron Delir, and thank you for letting me speak a few words to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Delir. Lindsay Akuta? Lindsay Akuta? And then Don Garza will be next. Welcome.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm actually here to talk about the Coliseum renovation. And I overheard someone talking in the back that I think it was already voted on, so I'm wondering if it's even worth it for me to say anything about it.
We had your card for general public comment, was that? I'm just checking that. You can still speak about it.
Mr. President, are there any provisions in the charter that would allow us to undo this decision? Because I'd really, there's no point in me making the comment.
There are provisions, sure. But we had it as general public comment, so that, I'm sorry. We would have called it special to hear your comments then, but unfortunately, because it didn't have the item up here, it just said "public comment." But go ahead, and yes, under the charter, it could be, so. Mr. City Attorney?
And just for the record, the speaker card indicates for P slash C, which would indicate general public comment.
Okay, please, but go ahead.
Well, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. My name is Lindsay Akuta. My name is Lindsay Akuta, and this is something that I've been thinking about doing for a long time, and I've had some reservations about doing it. Of course, my fear of public speaking is probably my greatest anxiety that I'm trying to get over, so if you guys can please bear with me. But this is just something that I felt like I've had to do, and I think I would regret it if I didn't do it. And the first news report I saw that there was going to be a council vote was Wednesday on the news, and there was a front page story in the Daily News. So here I am, and you can see I waited to the last minute. But to give some background on myself, I was born and raised in L.A., attended Monroe High School. I grew up in the Valley. I graduated from USC in '94. My parents were from the East Side. They both went to Roosevelt High School. They also went to Hollenbeck Junior High. All of my aunts and uncles either attended Roosevelt or L.A. Wilson. My grandfather attended Jefferson High School, UCLA, and worked for the city. Both of my parents worked for the city, and in my family, there's a total of 11 of us that have worked for the city of L.A. I've attended public schools all my life, and since the fourth grade, I've attended L.A. Unified Schools, and I'm proud to say that. And I mention all of this to you to let you know where I'm coming from, and that I'm an Angelino at heart, and my roots are in the city, and I love this city. And, you know, I love SC, and I love SC football, and I really think we're making a big mistake if we alter the integrity of that stadium in any way. You know, I think we have a historic national treasure that I think we're taking for granted. And, you know, I think everyone knows all the history tied to the stadium, and all the people, and the events that have taken place in that stadium. And, you know, it's really a grand structure. I think we take it for granted because we see it all the time, but it is really a massive grand structure that is very unique. And it's a bowl in the old Roman amphitheater style. And I just think we're making a big mistake if we do anything to alter the stadium. You know, the East Coast has all the tradition, a lot more than the West Coast, and I think, you know, we do have this stadium here that we should cherish.
If I can ask you to conclude.
Can I just read a comment from a...
All right, I know because we were speaking, I gave you a little extra time. It's usually two minutes, but I wanted to make sure that our conversation didn't include, so we've done two minutes of your speaking. If you can just wrap it up, please.
Okay. This is a comment from a guy named Matt Braze. He writes for a University of Arizona sports website, and he attended his first, like, his football game at the Coliseum last year at the U of A game, SC game. And he writes, this is an excerpt from that article, "At game time, 90,000 strong came out to support their back-to-back champions in pursuit of their third consecutive championship. As I entered the historic Coliseum, I lost my breath for a second or so seeing all the fans in the stadium. Previously, I'd only felt like this for huge U of A basketball games at Final Fours or in regional play."
I'm sorry, Mr. Akuta, we're quite a bit over as well. And if you'd like to submit that, we can actually each read that, if you'd submit that to the Sergeant-at-Arms. I'm sorry to interrupt you. We just are a little bit over, and I would try to be as fair as possible.
Okay, well, I think we're making a big mistake, and I think we really need to think about what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your testimony. Don Garza is our next speaker. We'll start with two. Please, Mr. Garza.
All right, start with two. Let's go. For the record, for the record, in the city of Los Angeles, I am a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I have a combat action ribbon, which I earned in the first Gulf War, and those are not given away lightly. The unit I was with, after finally reading the citations, because it's a unit award, they don't give you a citation with it, was the Navy Unit Commendation. And in combat, it is awarded to units that would be equivalent to somebody receiving a Silver Star. Can you believe that? All these years, I'm here thinking, well, it was just something they give away just because. But being a veteran and going through the things I did and the things I witnessed, you never get over, ever get over the fact that you always believed that you'll never, ever have done enough, when you see all of the people that are suffering now in combat for our great country. And to have, to be disrespected in this city council here today, when I wanted to take a picture of my friend Carol Schatz and somebody working for SRO Housing Corporation by one of the Sergeant-at-Arms, when they will allow other people who are guests in this facility to take pictures right there, is an outrage to me. You disrespected me, and you disrespected my friends, and you disrespected my pride in seeing somebody working in the bin, working and becoming a case manager at SRO Housing Corporation. I am beyond hurt. But I'm also going to say this. I want some time. Jose Wezar, I'm proud of you. I read what you said in The Garmin Citizen today. I'm proud of you, because everything you said in The Garmin Citizen is exactly what I would have said.
If I can ask you to conclude, Don.
We need a new ordinance. We need to get the people off the street, and we need to save lives, and it cannot, and it's not going to be done the old way. It's got to be done a new way.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Haney. Haney, excuse me. Mr. Haney? Okay. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt.
All right, all right, y'all ready? One Adam 12, one Adam 12, get the nigger, get the nigger who's working. Get him, get him, get him. What? He's working. We sold him a city permit to work, and now we're going to take his First Amendment right away. You can turn on the mic. It's okay, it's okay. One Adam 12, one Adam 12, see the nigger that's working that we sold a permit to? Take away his First Amendment rights, take away everything he got, take away his livelihood, then convict him of working, not stealing, not robbing, not killing, but working. Mark Brown, you filed a motion so I can't have my constitutional rights, because I'm a nigger. Niggers don't have constitutional rights. That's right.
Sir, sir, can you limit your comments to the decorum that this chamber deserves?
To the decorum? What do you think I deserve? I didn't get no First Amendment rights in court. What? What? Do you think I don't deserve First Amendment rights? I've been protected up on the boardwalk for five years up under my First Amendment rights. Now, all of a sudden, they're gone. Why? Bill, ask me, why? Now, if I was out there robbing and stealing and killing, oh, you got 40 units on me? You got your mark firming cops, you got three mark firming cops doing a sting investigation on Shea butter. Now, what sense do that make? A sting operation on Shea butter, after you sold me the permit to do it? And it's protected up under the First Amendment. This is, hey, they sold 1,235 fraudulent permits, then you're going to arrest me for working. This is what I do. I work. I don't rob, I don't steal, and I don't kill. I work. Nobody on the East Side got Shea butter. Nobody. It's not even a compelling interest. Why? Because I'm a nigger. That's why. You want my honest opinion? Oh, no, 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 no. When you was in court, and they was trying to rewrite the ordinance right there in the jury trial, you wasn't there. Oh, Eric, Eric Garcetti got the paperwork.
Thank you, sir.
You wasn't there when they tried to rewrite the ordinance.
Our next speaker is Matt Dowd.
Thank you very much. Can turn the mic on. Got the clock rolling. First of all, I'd like to say I'm proud of Janice Hahn. She's not here today, but I want to make a presentation. This is a handmade presentation. Unfortunately, it's not, you know, the high-quality Los Angeles city variety, but what it says, it's a certificate of honor to Janice Hahn in recognition of her determination, courage, and strength in protecting the rights of her workers. And they weren't even her workers. They're just workers from the Venice Beach Outlaw. So can I hand that over to Bill Rosenthal? Could you pass that over to somebody? Nobody. It's all shiny. It's got the bling and everything. And for the city attorney, I got a couple of questions, too. I was here when the Counsel adopted this ordinance on January 31st, and it says we will adopt the ordinance. We declare Venice Beach an officially recognized free speech and expression zone. So it's official. But you also instructed the department to form a Venice Beach Free Expression Protection Working Group. Now, if that group was formed and then disbanded immediately, how come you're charging and convicting people and writing tickets, making criminals out of people, when that working group doesn't even exist, and that's part of the motion that was passed? And then that group was ordered to study the lottery and all the programs governing the boardwalk and make suggestions whether to change, replace, or abolish them. So how can we change anything if there isn't even a group, and we're getting arrested? Okay? I mean, this is a pretty tough city council. I can see that. You got the power to change this. You got the chief here, you got the Kung-Fu Queen over here, you got Smith and Wesson. I mean, shoot it down. That's all it takes.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys. We will go to hear Bruce Darian in our Van Nuys remote facility.
Good morning, President Garcetti and the City Council. I'm here again to discuss the Malibu Pier, and I think that the City Council is thinking that this has nothing to do with the city and that there's no point in all of this. The Malibu Pier was the facility, like the Watergate Hotel, which brought the corruption to a head with federal, state, and city government and county government. The Malibu Pier, everything about it has been, is illegal and has been falsified and has been covered up. And it is a violation of the Ethics and Government Act by several governmental officials that are involved with this. And we can see from your conduct that there really is no intention to do your job in serving the people of Los Angeles, in knowing what happened and why the corruption came to a head at Malibu Pier, and how it affects everybody in Los Angeles, what is represented by what went on there, and how it affects us all. And so, basically, in the several times that I've been here, and as I said, you've done nothing, and I anticipate that you will do nothing, I'm here for the public, a plea to the public to take notice and see what's really happening, why this facility that's $8.5 million has been spent on it, has been closed for 12 summers, the terrible work that's gone on, the unlicensed contractors, the falsifying of the payroll, the money laundering, and who has ultimately the contracts to run the pier for basically a generation. These are some questions that we'll touch on later on, but I'd like the Counsel to take a hard look at what it's not doing and what its apathy represents to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you, President, and the rest of the City Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian. Our next speaker here in Counsel Chambers is Rose Luhon. Rose Luhon here? Not, Dele Alemann here? Not? Okay, going once, going twice. That will close our general public comment. If we can return to the agenda now. Item number one, and we call that special for a card from the public, Sylvia Hawkins on item number one.
On item number one, again, my name is Sylvia Hawkins. As we begin to reestablish all food service stores and all trades, we must say no on all organic fruit and food products. All of organic fruit and food product has been sent and made here to destroy with poison by these lands' prime ministers whom country, country we are bombing. Prince Charles and his sons from British. We are asking all foremlands of California to be aware of why there is no jobs for farmers.
Ms. Hawkins, one second, please.
Even if...
Ms. Hawkins?
We'll hold your time. Mr. Zine?
Mr. City Attorney, I'm looking at item number one, which has something to do with the street lighting district, and I'm listening to Ms. Hawkins' comments and trying to see how they relate. If you could, please enlighten me as to her response to item number one.
I don't know if I could ever enlighten you to any of Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins' responses, but Counsel does have authority to stop public comment on an item if it's not within the subject matter jurisdiction.
Turn to number 20, and no one...
Well, I would say that if it doesn't relate to this particular subject, then we should stop that discussion and move on the agenda.
Please try to keep your comments, Ms. Hawkins, to the street lighting district at Gladstone Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, I can continue?
Yes, if you talk about the street lighting district at Gladstone Avenue.
Okay, I did turn the card number 20 before 9 o'clock, before 10 o'clock. Did you get the card?
I believe number 20 is the street lighting district also, Mr. President. So I would say that Ms. Hawkins' conversation should then cease and desist.
Can I complete? Thank you, Eric.
No, we're not continuing.
Eric says yes. Who is your president?
Item 20, we will also reconsider. There's a card that came...
Ms. Eric Garcetti?
But for this one, please, to continue, on this one, you have to speak about Gladstone Avenue and Newton Street, please. And then we will go to 20 later, but on this one, if you're not going to speak about that, then we will close the public hearing on it.
Okay, did you put in card number 20?
We're not talking about number 20, Ms. Hawkins. We're talking about item number one. We need you to take the last minute and to speak about Gladstone Avenue and Newton Street Lighting District. Okay, go ahead and start the clock, and please talk about that only.
Again, this is a warning to all California foremlands to be aware of why there is no jobs for farmers, even if you are paying your rent.
Mr. President?
You are still...
We're still not on target.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We appreciate it. We'll call you on number 20.
Well, you did not put my special card in.
We will go back to it. If we can, please open the roll on item number one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay.
And that ordinance will go over for one week.
Yep. Let's take number 11 right now.
And that was called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla?
Is there staff here on this item?
Do we have any staff on item 11? Is anybody here?
If not, then... Mr. Weiss? Can I ask you a question about item 11? Because I know that item 11 actually is a motion to receive and file, which I'm okay with, because there's been a little bit of movement, I think, on the issue. So I'm just more curious as to how it relates to another motion that was brought in earlier this year, dealing with emergency preparedness and planning. Well, if we can hold this on the desk. Mr. President, if we can hold this on the desk and try to get some questions answered.
Sure, we will. Hold that on the desk. Next, if we can reconsider item 20, there was a card. If we can please open the roll, reconsideration of 20, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, 20 is before us. Ms. Hawkins, item number 20. Again, I would ask you to keep your comments specific to the item that is before us. Item 20 is about hearing date for the maintenance of Donna Avenue and Hatteras Street rebalance in the street lighting district. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm still concerned, again, I'm not trying to speak off the subject. On number five, which the public people cannot speak on, is dealing with food. As for Counsel's speaking, supposed to be a panel here today. Apparently, did not come today. No Counsel is speaking on number five. They do not have anything for the public people to speak on, which is number five, what the public people cannot speak on. So it is still, the public people have to speak on number five. It is about foods. You cannot overlook the public people, Counsel. Now, y'all are already aware that y'all are, some of y'all are working with Prince Charles. We are not here to start an argument. I've been putting in my card number 20, the special. Eric overlooked it. Now he want me to argue so they can put me out of the city hall. I am not that kind of violent woman. So Eric Garcetti, my question to you is, why did you overlook number 20? You can't say you forgot. And please don't say that word, "I'm sorry." My profile's still staying. So if you see on number five, it was no panel. I couldn't speak on number five. The people can't speak on number five. We can't help it because New York was bombed yesterday, and now y'all are angry. People are getting bombed in USA, what a black whatever race.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. If you have any...
Well, I have 48 seconds, mister.
If you can speak about the street lighting district.
Well, I'm trying to ask you a question. Why didn't you put in number 20?
I got the card late, and now we're taking hearing...
Oh, the card late? I was here before 9:45.
I believe you, and now if you would like to address the street lighting district? We appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I have 30 seconds. Thank you very much.
To speak about the street lighting district.
Okay, street lighting district. Thank you. So concerning the street lighting district, everybody be very aware concerning what is going on under the streets or under black tar, and why these cars are sliding in so many accidents? And why so many people are talking about what is going on with the streetlights, why they not on? Why are certain areas so dark? Why they can't get their streetlights fixed? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. I was just handed this card as well from Ben Drexter on item... I was just handed this card as well from Ben Drexter on item number 20. Mr. Drexter?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking off topic as well. Please excuse me.
I'm sorry, sir. We can't, we've had this review. Under our council rules, we need you to talk specifically about the maintenance of Donna Avenue and Hatteras Street rebalance.
Yeah, South Central Farm, thank you.
Thank you. That will close public comment on item number 20. And if we can open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, the ordinance goes over for one week.
Okay, that's right. We do not have 12 members anymore, so they'll go to second reading next week. And the next item, please.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Padilla?
My questions have been answered on item 11.
Okay. Do you want to take a vote on that? Okay. Let's take up item 11 then. If we can please open the roll on 11, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item is item number 30. There's not been public hearing on this. I'd like to invite first forward Teresa Grimes, Richard Gable, and Duncan Lemon to speak first. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Teresa Grimes. I'm the senior architectural historian with Christopher Joseph and Associates. We'll be preparing the EIR for the proposed projects surrounding the Derby. I'm here today to say that I don't believe the building qualifies as a monument primarily because of its lack of physical integrity. Every building has a history. The question is whether or not it's special or unique enough to qualify as a monument as defined by the city ordinance. This building was originally constructed in 1928 as a restaurant called Willard's Chicken Inn. In 1940, it was purchased and remodeled by the Brown Derby Corporation as the fourth restaurant in the chain. The vast majority of the history described in the monument application does not really relate to the Los Feliz restaurant, but rather the more famous restaurants that had on Wilshire Boulevard and the Hollywood Hangout on Vine Street, which are all now gone. The fact that the nightclub that moved into a portion of the building a few years ago resurrected the Derby name does not make it the Derby of yesteryear. The building has not been the Los Feliz Brown Derby since it closed in 1960. It then became Michael's and is now Louise's. Today, the building has been twice remodeled and doesn't look anything at all like it looked when it was the Los Feliz Derby. Designating this building as a monument would essentially be preserving a 1993 design for the fifth Louise's, not the 1940 design for the fourth Brown Derby. I encourage the council to decline the application.
Thank you. Richard Gable is our next speaker.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for listening. I'm one of the owners of the property. I wanted to give you some background on our involvement there. We purchased the property a year and a half ago and did our due diligence at the site regarding the history of the building. We found no record indicating that it might be a historic site. The building was not listed on the National Registry. The building was not listed on the California Registry. The building was not listed and was not nominated on the city's list of historical sites. The city is not listed on the Los Feliz Improvements Association's survey of historical sites. We hired an experienced historical consultant, Teresa Grimes, who just spoke, who used to work for the L.A. Conservancy, to provide us her opinion. She concluded that it didn't qualify to be designated as a historic site. We did learn about the building's history and that it was built as a Willard's Chicken and then became the fourth Brown Derby restaurant in the chain there and subsequently has become other restaurants. As a result of our due diligence, we went ahead and we purchased the property. Now we find ourselves in a situation where it appears we're being punished for mistakes that the city has made in the past. The original Brown Derby on Wilshire Boulevard and the second Brown Derby on Hollywood and Vine were the famous locations where there were unique building designs like the Derby on top of the buildings and where the entertainment industry frequented. Those are the buildings that may have qualified, but as you know, those have been demolished already. For over a year now, we've been proactive in working with the community on building a project that will make the community happy and will still be economically viable. We've attended over 20 various community meetings. We've gotten their feedback, and we've now incorporated the majority of the existing structure into our current design. It'll be hard to see because it's small. Can I continue just to...
I can ask you to conclude, or Mr. Lemon can yield some of his time to you, but otherwise, it's two minutes per person. I'm sorry. But he could yield some of his time if you want to continue speaking. Either way.
Good morning, President, city council members. My name is Duncan Lemon. I represent the ownership. I'm here today to oppose the designation and to continue on with the last conversation. We do not believe the site warrants any historical designation. We listen to the community based on feedback from them. We have incorporated mostly existing structure into our future development. The existing building we're showing here, and we're taking at least two-thirds of the building that we're incorporating into new design and new development on the site. Our design shows, shown here, keeps the entire building intact except for the back portion. We also maintained a large open space courtyard around the structure to limit the influence of new development on the existing structure. The view of the building from the major intersection of Los Feliz Boulevard and Hillhurst will remain intact, which is right here. And in making these changes, we have dramatically reduced our overall project size from 150,000 down to 100,000 square feet. This site plan depicts what part of the building we plan to maintain. We have also provided you with current pictures. You can see from the pictures that there are few to zero architectural features in any of the portion of the back building. I would urge the commission to cast your vote against the designation of the building based on the historical facts, not based on the political pressure. We are very sensitive to the community's desires, but this building does not qualify, and the only reason this property is being considered is due to the city's mistakes in the past. Thank you for listening and your consideration.
Thank you. We will, yes, next here Charlie Mims, and then Jay Platt.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I'm here today as president of the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council, which is the city-certified neighborhood council for this area, and here to impart our official position, which we did in this community impact statement, that we're in favor of approving the commission's recommendation to declare the entire building as a cultural historical monument. Without getting into a lot of the historical details, I will say that we did community outreach on this through our entire neighborhood council area. We held a meeting at our Mother of Good Council Parish Hall, which resulted in over 500 people turning out. I've never seen any city meeting where over 500 people turned out for an issue, let alone a zoning matter. We're in favor of reasonable housing development in the area. We think it can be accommodated by saving the Derby building and incorporating that into the developer's design. The developer is right. He has held a number of meetings and come a long way toward rightsizing the project, and we hope that the council will approve the commission's finding that this is a cultural and historical monument. Thank you.
After this speaker, Deborah Levine will be our next.
Actually, good morning. My name is Jay Platt from the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy strongly supports the nomination of the Los Feliz Brown Derby. In fact, our support is so strong that we sponsored the nomination, which is something the Conservancy unfortunately is rarely able to do. But we feel the threat to this building and the building's cultural and architectural importance warranted our direct involvement in asking the Cultural Heritage Commission to put this building on the list of the city's historic cultural monuments. They agreed with us. They passed that vote, and we hope that the council will concur. Just so you know, we strongly disagree with the owner's assessment that the building lacks historic integrity. We wouldn't be here today sponsoring this nomination if we felt that was the case. Not only is this the last remaining example of the most famous restaurant business that Los Angeles has ever known, rare is we don't know of any others in the city. The technology was brand new in 1929 when it was built. In 1940, Cecil B. Demille bought Willard's Chicken Restaurant, converted it into a Brown Derby, had it remodeled by a well-known architect, and chose to keep that dome. It is really a remarkable feature of Los Feliz and has become an iconic aspect of the corner that this business sits or the building sits on. There's also a car canopy. This was a drive-in restaurant in part, and it is the only example of an attached cantilever drive-in canopy on one of the city's restaurants that we have left. For these two reasons, we think the architectural importance along with the cultural importance warrants designation. We hope that the council agrees. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Levine, and Rebecca Goodman.
My name is Rebecca Goodman. I'm speaking on behalf of the Save the Derby Coalition. We represent, we're an umbrella group representing at least 15 different organizations and thousands and thousands of people across the city of Los Angeles, the state, and around the world. This building is unique. It's special. It's the last remaining Brown Derby from Hollywood's golden age. There's a magnificent dome of Lemeller Construction. It's got the last remaining awning of the car canopy. It's a vital part of the community. And if you were in the Mother of Good Council Church on November 10th of last year and you saw that packed hall of 500-plus community citizens coming out to support that building, you'd know what a historic and special cultural gem we have. We know that Councilman LeBange was there. He heard the people. He spoke to them directly. 500-some people, standing room only, asking that we recognize what a resource we have and declare this building a landmark. And rightfully so. Rightfully so. We've lost so many structures in this city already. We've lost, correct, we've lost the hat that was on Wilshire Boulevard. We've lost the location in Beverly Hills. We've lost the location in Hollywood. This is the last one left. And it's not just a archaic piece of history. It's a vital living part of our community. It's what people love best about the city of Los Feliz and the city of Los Angeles. The Cultural Heritage Commission made a, looked at a carefully reasoned, researched nomination supported by the Conservancy, and they voted four to one that this building meets the legal criteria of the ordinance. I urge you today to do the right thing, to listen to the community and to the Cultural Heritage Commission, and designate this a cultural landmark of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Nudelman.
Robert Nudelman, Director of Preservation Issues for Hollywood Heritage. Our board has supported this nomination through a vote that we took back in October of last year, and we fully support it today. Want to thank Councilmember LeBange for his leadership in getting this nomination through and working with the community, which has been cited here. The community's outpouring of support for this for the last several months is more than I've seen and haven't come to these meetings since 1979. I've never seen this kind of generated support for the project. So it's very important to see this go through, that the people's will are followed through with this, and also just to speak to the fact that the building is, has historic integrity to it. It has architecture with the car canopy, the dome roof, and other elements of it. And if you look at photos of them, and we have them in the documents and so on, of how it used to look, you'll see that most of it is still intact. The integrity is still there enough to recognize that back and meet all the qualifications of both local, state, or federal designation guidelines. So it does fully qualify. I remember hearing through arguments, sitting here, the same arguments made about the El Capitan Theater didn't qualify also because so much of it had been damaged inside. And of course, I don't think anybody would regret that nomination having gone through today. We feel the same purpose for this one. So just again, that we fully support it and thank the council member, the council for coming through with this action.
Thank you. Deborah Levine?
Yes. Hello, I'm Deborah Levine. I'm a member of the Save the Derby Coalition. I am a member of the Los Angeles Conservancy, and I come to you from the ground at 4411 and 4455 Los Feliz Boulevard. I represent the Los Feliz Towers Homeowners Association, 200 taxpaying home-owning people who fervently enjoy and love this building, and we support Councilman LeBange's support of this designation, and we urge you to save the Derby. Thank you.
Thank you. Socie Lujan and Samuel Miguel Sanchez.
Hello, city council members. It seems that with the item agenda here, a lot of community is not being heard. And unfortunately, that echoes throughout Los Angeles, and at this point also as an example, the South Central Farm. Unfortunately, we need a lot of help to keep the South Central Farm going, and Villarreal has let us down with that. But I'm putting this into perspective to the agenda item. So I want to make sure that people can understand that if they see the plight of the farm, they can also see that that's the community reaching out. And you have a lot of community members here in support of the Derby. So I'm trying to also, you know, make that parallel as well. And if people go to www.southcentralfarmers.com, they can actually donate money to the Trust for Public Land to help save the South Central Farm. And I wanted to thank also the councilperson who came out, the one councilperson who came out recently, not even his district, and visited the farm. And I was hoping that many more of the councilperson would be able to be more concerned about coming out, but I want to thank you very much for coming out, Mr. Rosenthal. And Ms. Perry, you're letting the community down. You need to step up now to redeem yourself, to save this farm...
Ms. Lujan?
Because the community will no longer have you...
If we can keep it focused...
...in the community, serving them for their district...
Excuse me, Ms. Lujan, if we can keep this focused on the item that is before us.
Totally let it down. In the beginning, it was...
Thank you. We need you to stay focused. I appreciate you did that at the beginning, but we need you to stay focused on that. And Samuel Sanchez, if you'd like to report. Okay, sure. Go ahead, on the Derby.
And also just to help save that historical place, it's very important.
Okay.
And please save South Central Farm.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez?
When you talk about incorporating our cultural history and our diversity and our resources, such as our children, into historical landmarks and preserving things, I have all due respect for people who try to preserve those things, such as the people trying to preserve this Brown Derby. But there's something that's lacking, and that's passing knowledge down to our children. And they don't get that from us or you. They get it from your parents. And there's no place in the community of South Central for them to do that.
Can you please relate this to the item that is before us?
This is completely related to everything that's going on in the city. We lose our cultural and historical landmarks, and we falsely deem gaudy buildings like this one as great resources, and they're not. They're full of corruption and well-meaning people who are stepped on by those who wish to preserve those things...
Mr. Sanchez, if you can please speak about the historical preservation that's at mind. I appreciate very much what you're saying, but if you can speak on that, if not, we'll close the public hearing.
How do we advocate for historical preservation in the ghettos? How do you advocate for historical preservation in areas where there is no grocery store that sells...
A valid question, but that is not before us today. I'm going to close our public comment on this. I appreciate your comments. That closes our public comment today on this item. Our first speaker on this will be Mr. LeBange.
Thank you very much, members. Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I want to make a motion.
Actually, I just want to... Just before we start, Mr. LeBange, the city attorney will read an opinion from the Attorney General opinion. And again, we do have public comment, which is a time that people can be heard on anything, which we held earlier in this meeting. That's why we were limiting it out of respect to both sides on this issue to make sure we could have a focused discussion on what is before us. Mr. City Attorney?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. President. In 1992, the Attorney General has issued an opinion basically that says that the Brown Act vests the legislative body of a local public agency with wide discretion concerning the adoption of regulations limiting the time at its meetings for public testimony on each issue and for each speaker.
Thank you for that. Mr. LeBange?
Thank you very much. Members, what we have here is an opportunity to be part of the effort that many have made in this city to preserve buildings. And with respect to Mr. Gable, Mr. Gable, do you need to say anything more because you ran out of time? You don't need to say anything more?
I would like to clarify...
Yeah, if you could just clarify a point on my time, members.
I think you know where we stand on this. We feel like we're kind of caught into a corner on something that has nothing to do with... with us. We don't believe it's historic, but I also just wanted to clarify, on the agenda today, it actually lists the owner as the applicant for this. That is not the case.
Okay, all right, well then, is that true, Mr. City Attorney? Would you correct that? But as you said right there, if you don't understand this, you came into this here. What is great about our city is all of a sudden, people rise, whatever their issues are, and those who have come to know and love what is on the corner of Hillhurst and Los Feliz want to see the building saved, and we have an ordinance that saves it. This building is historic monument number one fifty. And Mr. Jones is here from the Planning Department, right? And Charlie Ross, you're going to speak to this issue here. The Wilted Theater, they didn't want to save that building, but Wayne Rakovich stood up and he said, "I'm going to save it, I'm going to find a way to comply with the codes." The Chapman Park Building, Chapman Park Market on Sixth Street, they didn't want to save that building, they wanted to find a way to save it and restore it and alter it a little bit, but to make it economically viable for what is the Wilshire Center. There is opportunity. For, hold my time, explain what designation means on this matter.
It means two different important items. Number one, if there is a demolition of the building, because it is a cultural monument, it requires a full environmental impact report. Secondly, because it is a cultural monument, any demolition of it, there is an automatic hold put on it, or substantial rehabilitation, or changes made to the building while it is reviewed by the Cultural Heritage Commission and the Planning Department staff. So it adds additional things to it.
And just to add a question, as Mr. Charlie Memes, who's the president of the Greater Grift Park Neighborhood Council, said, "They're not opposed to housing as long as it's balanced." If in this development process, if this building is designated a monument, you would look at the whole matter, how it fits into the new development, and if there needs to be maybe some alteration of the existing building to help the new development fit, you would take that into consideration as long as it doesn't hurt the integrity of the building.
Correct, and it would have to meet the Secretary of Interior's standards for any alterations to it.
I'm proud of my district, and I'm extremely proud of my Los Angeles, and what about our Los Angeles, wherever it is, is when people rise to say they want something done and they want to save a building. And if people who want to do economic enterprise and develop, we want to help them too, but at the same time, that's a challenge for you. I believe the property value has gone up since you bought it, correct? If you sell it tomorrow, it goes up, the property value in Los Angeles goes up, and you have that opportunity too. We want to see this building saved. I think there's been a lot of work that has been done by the community, and one of the things that was most telling of the five hundred people who were coming and going on that night at Mother Good Counsel last year was a graphic on the wall that showed the brown derby in Hollywood gone, the brown derby in Beverly Hills gone, the brown derby that Sergeant Tom Bradford tried to stand in front of a bulldozer, he was a Rampart officer then, to stop it. It's on top of a building. Not right, not right. Now we have an opportunity to say to someone, who we would welcome to do economic development, take advantage of this beautiful historic structure, restore it, and also come to us with a plan that meets the approval of the community. And that's the opportunity that the Planning Department likes to see, that's the opportunity the councilmen like to see, that's the opportunity the Greater Grift Park Neighborhood Council, the Hollywood Heritage, the Save the Derby people, and all the people in Los Feliz. So members, I ask for your eye vote, so we can save this important building in Los Feliz. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zein, do you want to be heard on this? I think that was from a previous item. That was before with the public comment, or did you want to be heard on this one?
On the brown derby?
This is, yeah, on the brown derby.
I want to be heard on the brown derby.
Please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I want to talk about the brown derby. You're with the derby?
Oh, Plan Department people.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was distracted by a phone call, and I saw some brown derby folks, some advocates over there. The issue for me is we have taken many of our historical buildings, and they're now gone. When I look at the brown derby and what it represents, old-time Los Angeles, old-time Hollywood, if we look at some of the other developments that have taken place in the city of Los Angeles over the years, our history is vanishing. And you look at other parts of this country, the parts of this world, we maintain and we preserve, but it doesn't seem to be the case. It's a hodgepodge at best here in the city of Los Angeles, so I would support preserving that as a facility, that it's been, whatever historical designation that it needs to be, it would just be one more building that would be leveled, that some other modern building would take its place, and all the history just vanishes away. We've seen that happen over and over and over. And I just came back from a place where they have buildings that are hundreds of years old, well-preserved. We don't see that in Los Angeles, and what we see is this continuing process of neighborhoods being turned into apartments and condos and demolishing the history of Los Angeles. So I strongly support what Mr. LeBange is proposing on this, and I think it's for the betterment of the city of Los Angeles that we maintain some integrity and some history of the glamour of Hollywood, and that once reflected at the brown derby. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. Does anybody else want to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, a motion is required on this.
I'm going to make the motion, but when the owner of the property stated that there was a typographical error in the agenda...
We can correct it on the journal.
That needs to be corrected? The City Attorney approves the correction on that? No problem?
There's no problem with the correction. I don't know the specific facts of the matter.
No Public Information Notification Act, no problem.
We'll make sure that that is corrected.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
So the motion is to uphold the...
So, Madam City Clerk, would you recite the motion?
Well, the motion is required because the Chair of Plum submitted this without recommendation, so the recommendation would be to adopt the findings of the Cultural Heritage Commission as the findings of the council, and to approve the March sixteenth recommendation of the Cultural Heritage Commission relative to the inclusion of the Los Feliz property on the list of historical cultural monuments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Attorney, do I have to repeat that by word?
You can just move that if you want.
No, just if, you just have to move that.
Okay, I move it. I just want to go every key and every eye and every brown derby, we should say. Thank you.
Okay, if we can please prepare the roll on the item and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, I'd also like to ask that that item go forth with, along forth with, with twenty-eight, nineteen, seventeen, and thirteen.
All right, so let's say those ones again? Say those numbers again, Ms...
Seventeen, nineteen, twenty-eight, thirty.
All right, we'll get those all forth with. Mr. Zein?
Number twelve, we want to bring that up for reconsideration. We do have a lady who's been waiting to speak on that matter.
Okay, let's...
If we could please do that, Ms. President.
Okay, let's hold on one second. I believe we have a substitute motion on forty-one already circulated?
Yes, it is, Ms. President.
Let's just open the roll on forty-one then, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, did we reconsider twelve already or not?
No, it hasn't been reconsidered yet.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration of twelve.
Ten ayes.
That is before us again. Before that, I'd like to recognize Ms. Gruehl for an announcement, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Just briefly, and particularly want to give this direction a little bit to the members of my Transportation Committee. Many of you may have seen on NBC last night a report about taxi cabs and meters being adjusted, which was exposing potentially fraud and criminal behavior in the taxicab business. And in fact, the Department of Transportation has received numerous complaints from residents who believe they may have been overcharged in meters that have been fixed. We want to make sure that people, if you have experienced any potential fraud, that you call three-one-one, that you let us know where this is happening, whether you be a senior, or a tourist, or someone who just takes taxi cabs for your ability to get around Los Angeles. And secondly, Councilmember Weiss and I introduced a motion today that asks for the City Attorney and LAPD and DOT to investigate, and for criminal conduct to be pursued, and us to have stronger kinds of things that will use laws that will in fact be harsher penalties than currently exist. And so I just want to make sure that you understand that we're going to go after those unscrupulous cab drivers and look at harsher penalties, but need the public's help in doing that. So thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. It'll be on Channel Four again tonight, and we hope people will watch it and be able to identify where they may have been a victim of this crime and help us solve this problem in Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Ms. President.
Thank you very much. We'll now take up item number twelve, and we will ask to come forward Maria Rich... Sorry, Ricklickey? Okay, Ricklickey? From the city of Beverly Hills, please, welcome, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President and City Council members, for your courtesy. My name is Maria Richlichke, and I'm here on behalf of the city of Beverly Hills to seek clarification on item twelve. The city council action on the public safety report relative to the request of the city of Los Angeles to contract with the city of Beverly Hills to provide animal care and control services for Beverly Hills. The recommended action reads to deny the request to negotiate. The city of Beverly Hills would like to clarify that the denial is for renegotiation at this time, and that we may re-initiate the discussion at a future point in time. The city of Beverly Hills is committed to the provision of animal shelter and field services for our community and neighboring communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, and ma'am, I will clarify it for you, although with all candor, you were at the public safety hearing, so you heard precisely what we did in committee. There had been some discussion evidently between the city of Beverly Hills and I guess the Animal Service Department about doing something like this, which we all think is a sound, good thing, if it can be done properly. You heard Mr. Fujioka, who's in charge of making sure that everything that the city of LA does pencils out, the city of LA needs to be paid for its services that it provides to others, but it also can't run a profit because we're not a business, we're a government. Mr. Fujioka came before the committee and said he had serious concerns that this proposal that was before us, that had been provided to us by this department, was not sound fiscally, and he encouraged you to go back to the drawing board and work with him and the department and try to make something work. So there was no lack of clarity, and I encourage you to do, no, you're... I would encourage you to do precisely what you had been encouraged to do by Mr. Fujioka. He's open and willing to work on this, that's all you need to do, okay? So I'd move the item as put before us and encourage you not to... Doing it this way doesn't help you. Go behind the scenes and work it out with all the city departments that are involved. Everyone wants to help, but doing it this way isn't the right way to do it. Call them, okay? Thank you. Move the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss, I'll second that. If we could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. I think that's all from the regular meeting. If we can return to the special meeting, we have item number two. This has had a public hearing already, so there's no requirement to do so. There are a number of cards, Ms. Perry, did you want to move for a public hearing of any sort?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would move for five minutes.
Okay. What we'll do is, we'll have a five-minute public hearing. I think there are thirteen cards, which means we may not get to everybody. We'll set the clock at a minute to try to get as many people in as possible, starting with Cheryl McDonald, be followed by David Poffenberger, and then Jericho Wogan will be our first three speakers to come forward.
Cheryl had to leave to go back to work. My name is David Poffenberger. I graduated from USC School of Architecture last year, and as part of our required reading, I read The Life and Death of Great American Cities by Jane Jacobs. This should also be required reading for the city council members, and I'm going to send you guys a copy and cross my fingers, hoping that you read it, so that mistakes like this one, like the choosing of the site for the police headquarters in this parking garage, don't happen. This decision to use the site will affect downtown for years, and it was made without any regard to a city plan, and it was made without the input of the public. And I do feel marginalized. As downtown continues to develop, it'll be much harder to make decisions that people don't notice, and I'm telling you right now that we do notice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Russell Brown. I'm on Downtown LA Neighborhood Council Plum Committee, their executive committee. I'm president of RAD LA, the Residents' Association Downtown LA, Historic Core Neighborhood Block Grant, Alden Downtown, and also with the Gallery Row. No one in the community opposes the police headquarters. Everyone in this community opposes the location of this, and especially the parking structure and the support facilities. This was done with no public notice. It was moved from the old location to the new location, and almost a year after the fact, the community was told, "Oh, by the way, there's a six-story parking structure, a car wash, and a car repair facility right next to St. Viviana's Cathedral." Not only the location, but the public process is what the community is very uncomfortable with. I think today's sort of a fitting day as we talk about historical issues and the passions of the community, and the ability of the community to be listened to. These issues are exactly what this is about, so we would like you to reconsider. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Jericho Wogan, and I'm here representing the Artist District and Gallery Row. The LAPD needs a new home. The proposed projects of the LAPD headquarters is to be on the doorstep of City Hall. We would like to propose a new city park across the street to act as a welcome mat and a civic center in a community park across from City Hall. The downtown Los Angeles is being reborn and renewed. Let's make a statement as residents and downtown business owners to bring forth a park and give Los Angeles the beauty and new face it deserves. When you leave City Hall today, look at the empty field across the street and think green. The city park across the street from City Hall is a beautiful vision that could be a wonderful addition to the community. Thank you from the Artist District and Gallery Row.
Hello, my name is Martha Higgins, and I really urge you to reconsider this. Take some more time. LA is notorious for poor planning. This is the worst example of urban planning. No great city has a police headquarters right next to City Hall. We need a park, we need a civic plaza for public gatherings, celebrations, we need a city that is a welcoming, warm city. The residential population is increasing. I'm here on behalf of those people that aren't even here yet, they have no say, they are not aware of what is about, could happen to our great city. We have a remarkable opportunity here, the proper channels have, procedures have not gone through, we've never had a say on the location, it's an outrage to the community, and I really urge you to reconsider. Take some more time. There's no planning being done. It's terrible. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Chaken. I am speaking on behalf of la civic park dot org, which is a grassroots coalition of downtown residents, businesses, and public space advocates. We want the LAPD to have the new headquarters it needs and deserves. However, the plan before you squanders the opportunity to build a great civic park for the people of Los Angeles. On Wednesday, our group, la civic park dot org, delivered to the Public Works Committee petition signed by two thousand people in support of that park. Championed by the visionary urban planner Ira Yellen, the park is a key part of the nineteen ninety-seven Civic Center master plan. The old Caltrans site comes into city ownership as part of the land swap that created the site for the new Caltrans building. Part of the city council motion, which established that swap, describes the conversion of, and I quote, "The block directly across from the first street steps of City Hall into open space." Can I continue?
Well, we only, we actually, they had not put the clock on, so we've had more than five minutes on the side, so...
Can I still continue?
Well, then, you'll give, someone else will not be able to speak on your...
Can I just... Thank you. Can I just take one, one more minute to get this into record? Okay, great. The new Caltrans building was designed specifically to face a park. We understand that it'll take more time to get the headquarters project right, but let's take the time to get it right. We'll all live with the results of these decisions for generations to come. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Just like five seconds or whatever that I can take up.
Like I said, we, they did not have the clock going, so you're actually getting more than five minutes, so please go ahead. We're going to give time for the people who aren't supportive after your presentation.
I have to say, after, after we watched what happened in Louisiana during Hurricane Katrina, we saw an inundation of safety, fire vehicles, and all types of equipment because they did not plan correctly on how to protect that equipment. In Los Angeles, we are prone to earthquakes. Why are we putting all of our equipment in, how high was that? Six stories? A six-story parking structure with the gasoline underneath it, a motor pool and everything else? I think we need to really start looking at, what I was taught in the Marine Corps was improvise, adapt, and overcome. We need to get rid of this old way of thinking. If we have a major earthquake or somebody decides to set off a bomb, a terrorist, we're going to lose a whole bunch of major vehicles, and then...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garza. We'll have one last speaker, the last speaker, then we'll call the names of those that were here.
My name is Pedro Galindo, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Higgins Building I recognize the need for, for police facilities, however, I think that this specific plan has been thought up in haste and is not being considered appropriately, and other alternatives, and there are alternatives, are not being discussed. Furthermore, there hasn't been enough public input. We need more public input, especially for our... We need more public input, especially for our building, 135 residential units, who are right across the street from this site with regard to noise, pollution, and traffic. These are very serious issues for us as residents and as voters. And just—I just feel like we're squandering an opportunity also to renovate—to rejuvenate downtown into more of a cultural place where people can stay here after 5:00 p.m. instead of clogging up the freeways. We need to make this more of a residential, cultural center.
Thank you very much. The other two speakers, I will give your names. Stephen Ziegler and Claudia Ardonee. Thank you very much for being here. I'd like to call Grant Sunu, Thomas Yi, and June Burke. And those will be our last three speakers. Yes, you may give it to the Sergeant of Arms, and he'll be able to give that for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Grant Sunu, and I'm here to speak in favor of the EIR and the police headquarters project. I've worked in Little Tokyo for nearly 10 years, but as a fourth-generation Japanese-American, I'm really a lifelong stakeholder in Little Tokyo. I stand before you today as a representative of J-Town Voice and Japanese-American Community Services. As such, I would like to voice my support for this project. It is my opinion that the city has done an excellent job of working with the Little Tokyo community over the past couple of years to ensure that our needs are served by the planned headquarters. Finally, as a second-year urban planning student and community activist, I am familiar with the rigorous guidelines and protections that CEQA offers and feel secure in saying that the city has taken extraordinary efforts to fulfill the public comment portion of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yi?
Good morning, council members. My name is Thomas Yi. I'm with the Little Tokyo Service Center, organization that was founded in 1979, has been providing social services and community development in the Little Tokyo neighborhood for over 25 years. And I'm speaking in support of the project and in support of the EIR. In particular, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Perry for her leadership in guiding the project team through over two years of a process that has involved public input. Little Tokyo community members have been involved in this since the beginning over two years ago, and, you know, there's always community concerns that come up with a project this big, and I really feel that the council member and the project team's done a great job in being sensitive to community concerns at every step of the way. They've made modifications to the project countless times, and it's changed many times since the beginning, and the project that you have before you today is a result of that long process, which provides some community benefits and provides benefits for the city as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. June Burke?
Good morning, President Protem, and members of the city council. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Little Tokyo Community Council. Our president, Tom Kame, is in Japan, and many of our board of directors are out of town today. So I just want to make it—put it on the record that the Little Tokyo Community Council, which has organizations, businesses, resident associations, and institutions within the Little Tokyo community of over 90, are members, and we have been kept apprised of the police headquarters facility plans ever since 2003. We've had countless meetings in our community, and we have voted overwhelmingly. There was no dissenting vote from the council members to support the police headquarters facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Thank you all for being here this morning, and I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry.
Chair, this has been a very long and arduous process, but I think ultimately a good one. I think you're all pretty familiar with the historic and cultural importance of the Little Tokyo community, and we had hearings that went on for well over a year with full participation from the Little Tokyo community. The Higgins residents were also quite involved, and I appreciate their input. I actually think, in spite of their concerns and opposition, that they made it a better project, and I think that the current iteration bears a lot of their input, and I appreciate this. One comment I do want to make about downtown Los Angeles. We have coming online in downtown Los Angeles a 12-acre park as part of the Grand Avenue project, and as many of you know, that will stretch from the steps of the Music Center to the Spring Street steps of City Hall, and that will be a public park for all in this city to enjoy. In addition to that, we have pending the Art Park, which is on our current city parking lot, just on the west side of Little Tokyo or on the backside of Parker Center. That park will be a three-acre park. Now, both of these parks are within five minutes of the Civic Center and will be, again, another public park, so I think we're very blessed and fortunate that probably within the next 24 months, we will see groundbreakings in the very beginnings of 15 acres of brand-new open space in this immediate area. This is a hard—this is a difficult process, and I appreciate that. We do need to create this new police headquarters, and because of the great and fantastic dynamic input from the residents, this will now have a one-acre park on the site of the police headquarters, a full-service cafe that will also be open at nighttime, and because of the community's input, it'll have a newspaper and magazine stand, a flower shop, and the auditorium, which is a part of this complex, will be available for public use when the department is not using it. And I recently viewed an early iteration of the design of the project, and I'm going to continue to work with the community to further refine it and the city family, and I look forward to putting information out. As I was saying to Mr. Parks, we've got all these projects coming online, new park space. We have to make sure that we link these projects to residents who are unskilled and need employment. It's the fastest way for us to help people empower themselves. So I look forward to being able to publish the information on that, so people know how they can come and get some employment as part of this project as well. We'll continue to work on refining the green space and open space around the project and the exterior so that it is welcoming and inviting and can be a complement to the 15 acres of green, open space, parkland that we will be able to build in downtown Los Angeles for the entire city to enjoy very soon, and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Weisar, then Mr. Labanche.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge Jan Perry for what you've gone through with this. I know that it was supposed to be at another site, and there was community concern, and you pulled it together at the current location, which has been demolished and moving forward. And coming from the LAPD, where I spent over 30 years, the current Parker Center should have been condemned many years ago. It is not adequate to provide administrative or any other operations to the people of Los Angeles, so I don't think anyone disputes we need to have a facility for our law enforcement operations, especially since we plan to add additional 1,000 officers to the Police Department of Los Angeles. Clearly, Jan, I just want to acknowledge you publicly that while we have some people here who aren't supporting this, it's been a long process, a very cumbersome process. I know you've led that challenge with your folks from your office, Jerry Miller. I know you've been involved in it too, the negotiations. The process doesn't always make everyone happy, but clearly, when all of the dust is settled and the structure's built, it's going to better serve the city of Los Angeles. And the issue about residents in downtown Los Angeles, if you travel down Spring Street and you travel down other areas, you'll find many of those old office buildings turning into lofts, condominiums. The parcels down here are turning into a high residential area, and I see that as I travel in downtown in the evening hours. So the downtown area is becoming alive with a lot of activity, and I don't know of any other location, after all the discussions and all the debate, where we can establish a police administration building other than the current site, which is the old Caltrans building. So, Jan, congratulations for bringing this to pass for the benefit of all the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Labanche.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to congratulate Jan Perry for the work she's doing on this. It's not easy to cite an area that—a structure, a civic facility that's going to provide services to all of Los Angeles. I did want to point out one thing, and, you know, we are lacking in public open-space parks in the downtown area, but we—Jan Perry correctly pointed out the number of open-space park areas that are coming to downtown. We did miss one, and that is right over the 110 freeway on Third and Bowery, next to the Belmont High School. I worked on a project there to bring in a 10-acre park that will open up in less than a year. It will be operated by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and that's going to bring much-needed space here locally and a number of students and children who live in that vicinity who do need more open space to not only learn about the environment, learn about nature, but also have some open space to play at the soccer field that would go in there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Labanche?
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar, and as you spoke there, I heard you talk about the other connections with the pueblo and on the cornfields on Allegiant Park. Ms. Perry, thank you for your leadership, and to the people of downtown who came here to speak, thank you. I think that—as Ms. Perry said—the idea is you're not happy, but with the absolute process that the city's involved in, you've been made input here, which has altered the project. And I think what's important too, and I looked at the site just yesterday, is the setback line from St. Viviana's across the street to the Caltrans, and I asked our city engineer to look at the Wilshire Courtyard at Athen Curzon, which was a high-rise development in the Wilshire area, which became a six-story low-rise, but they set back, way back, and I'd like the police facilities administrator to drive Athen Curzon and look at that setback to make sure that there's a setback of proper note and also a potential sitting park in that area, whatever makes sense with all the input that's there. It's very difficult to have city facilities anywhere that we put them, but this is a spot that is right in the heart of the city and will work to the best interest of all the people, and unfortunately for those in the Higgins Building, which sat dormant for years and years and years. It came to life at the same time the city had a need and a strong need to create a police administration building. So I understand your plight as people who live there. I know Russ Brown, who used to live in my district. You're in the Higgins Building now, Russ, but you're a part of downtown, and you're involved there, but I—this is the process, but I think there's still more process that you can get involved with and have your comments be heard and hopefully implemented. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labanche. Our last speaker is Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend Ms. Perry, and having worked on that project of a police facility for a number of years, and we always thought the ideal site was the Alameda site, but it was the first time when Ms. Perry got involved with it and started looking at the community input that the issues of the church and the temple were not taken into account and the issue of the jail. These are things that certainly fine-tune that project, and the movement of the project where it is now, I think, is an effort to keep the Parker Center in the downtown area, but also I think it's important that we not lose sight that it is a police station and that there are some issues that we have to be sensitive to as to the surrounding areas, who should have access to it. It's a—the basically the heart and soul of the police department and its administration, so it can't be viewed as a facility just for general public use. It's a building that actually performs one of the major tasks in the city of Los Angeles. So I think there has been an appropriate compromise and a sense of balance. The police department's building has been moved from what was thought to be a primary site on Alameda, but we also have the funding that's going to continue all their emergency preparedness operations there. The jail is certainly moving forward to get fixed, and so all of those items will work in concert, so the department will be effective. But I think there's been some strong compromises to make sure that there's an understanding that that is truly a police facility. It has to have security, it has to have protection, but also there's some benefit around that facility to where the community can have access. And I think one of the greatest improvements is making sure that that community auditorium is on the ground level, where people can use it for activities that are not police officer-related but are community-related. And so I want to thank you for keeping your eye on it, making sure that with all of those community inputs, you've balanced them quite well to give us exactly where we should be, and the important thing is the funding is there to get those things done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry, you ready to vote?
Yes, I am ready to vote. I just want to say thanks again, Mr. Parks, and, yeah, the auditorium is on the ground floor. That's the configuration. The cafe is—they're broken up in separate structures apart from the administrative portion of the building. That was to reduce the massing and make it a thinner, taller building so that we could preserve some of the view shed for the residents in the Higgins Building. And actually, I appreciated the fact that early on, the architect took models and asked them to participate in a community charrette to decide how the building should be sited or positioned on this site. So I was happy that we were able to give them that opportunity to do that, and I'm going to continue to keep the community involved. The Higgins community and Gallery Row, as well as Little Tokyo, in terms of the development of the exterior of the building, again, the one-acre park, which they've already given us a heavy contribution of ideas, and they have been incorporated into the iteration and see where this takes us.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
We will now adjourn our special meeting and go back to the regular meeting of the council. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral—
Motion and referred.
—and that clears the disc.
Okay, colleagues. Any announcements—I believe we'll not be doing adjourning motions today, so—okay? So we have some announcements before we leave—yes. Mr. Parks, announcements?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of announcements. The Expo Line Construction Authority is going out in the community to discuss the progress of the line. There was one meeting on May 17th at the Veteran Memorial, but also their last meeting will be Tuesday, May 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. at L.A. Trade Tech on 400 West Washington, and that facility and the community around it will be impacted by that line, and so we certainly encourage people to go there and get their input. Also, tomorrow, there's a major breakfast, the African-American and Latino breakfast that will be sponsored by the L.A. County Sheriff's Department and the Multifaith Clergy Council. It will be at USC Town and Gown, 3415 South Figueroa. Starts 8:00 o'clock registration, 9:00 o'clock breakfast, and co-sponsor Sheriff Lee Baca will be there in attendance. Also, the Los Angeles African-American engineers will be having a—for elementary, middle, and high school students—a Learning Science and Technology Awareness Day, Saturday, May 20th, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that's at the Expo Park Epic Center, 3990 South Menlo.
Thank you. Mr. Labanche, and then Mr. Zine.
Great afternoon, Saturday and Sunday, from 11:00 to 8:00 o'clock at night at Noho, the Noho Festival, and I hope I'll come and take the red line, the green line, the blue line, the orange line, but come to North Hollywood. $3, it'll get you on the rail all day past, so you could have a public transit, and the great thing about the Noho Festival is free. Just come and enjoy the beautiful North Hollywood area and all the art.
It's a great event, so we do encourage—I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow at 9:00, I'm calling my first Empowerment Congress conclave, and it's going to be over at LMU, and over 100 to 200 of citizens from the new 11th district—it's a new district— are going to meet with me, and we're going to have the head of planning, Gail Goldberg, and the head of transportation, Gloria Jeff, and we're going to have a real symposium on the issues in the 11th district, and I want to empower the community so that we can focus on transportation, planning issues, and other issues. It's a first, and I'm honored to announce that today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
On behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department, there's the annual Los Angeles Police Celebrity Golf Tournament tomorrow, starting at 10:00 a.m. at Rancho Park, and a lot of celebrities will be there, publicly invited, and I think tickets are $5, families all invited. There's a number of activities, a lot of police equipment on display, so Rancho Park tomorrow for the annual Los Angeles Police Celebrity Golf Tournament with a lot of celebrities playing golf and giving autographs and photos, and they're very courteous to the people on that day, that meaning the celebrities. The police are always courteous. And the next event that I want to comment on is on Sunday, and that is going to be at Warner Center Park, and the Arthritis Foundation is having a walk to raise dollars, and that'll be at 9:30 in Woodland Hills, Warner Center Park, an arthritis walk, so anyone interested in that, invited to Warner Center Park at Santa Pagan near the Marriott Hotel, north of the 101 freeway. 9:30 tomorrow—9:30 on Sunday, and tomorrow Rancho Park for L.A. Police Celebrity Golf Tournament. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, call the roll, or I guess we're just adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry.
One quick announcement?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Tomorrow, Saturday, May 20th, from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM, the Energy and Environment Committee is having a special meeting at the Marvin Browdy Center, Conference Room 1 A and B, 6262 Venice Boulevard. And then, the same meeting will take place at the Mark Ridley Thomas Constituent Center Community Room, 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM tomorrow, 8475 South Vermont. And the topic for informational purposes only will be to present information to the community regarding the revenue requirement study of DWP, or the Department of Water and Power. So, it's my early effort to get information to the community so they can start participating in the public process about possible rate adjustments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Thank you for doing it across the community. I look forward to spending the day with you.
Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The meeting, oh, Mr. Parks?
Let me just say thank you to all my colleagues for the assistance yesterday at the ADHOC Committee, and the vote today gets us in good stead with these meetings that are going on next week.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.